Testing, one, two, two, three.
Hey, that worked.
All right, sounds good. Thank you, David.
Can you hear us?
Yep, loud and clear.
Perfect, thank you. Do we have to know anything special for our new establishment?
You're on the announcement.
Yeah, I want to turn the video on for the room there on the control panel.
And we're not individually muting and unmuting that joke.
Uh, no, so it's the same as before, where?
Okay, it's just picking everything up.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we're good to go?
Yeah.
Good.
We're live.
Okay, let's call this meeting June fourteen, twenty twenty-three, meeting of all the county planning and zoning, meeting to order. Start with a quick roll call. Ms. Hanning, are you on? Yes, she is on the screen.
I'm here.
Okay, Ms. Platt, here, Ms. Kornick.
Here.
David?
Yeah.
Pinkley is here. We're at full strength. Maybe four and a third instead of five, but I'll take credit for that. Okay, first item on the agenda, item on the agenda, I guess I can say that. And I would just say, like, to thank my colleagues for the, for, so basically, last month, I was out medical issues and remained seriously compromised in my vision, but I'd like to try to make my contributions best I can, so. Failing in the traces, feel free to point that out to me, we'll make other arrangements, and then be aware that I'm seeing everything, so don't be shy at all about it. Hey, hey, burn, what about this, what about that? This, this new setup with the screen is fairly accommodating, but maybe don't be shy about flagging any clip that I may miss in my current condition. So, looking at the agenda as distributed, are there any comments on it? The only comment I would make is the item of protection overlay zone information. David and I talked before the meeting about maybe breaking that into specific categories that will be changed agenda, but just be aware that we'll, I would like us to go through that, talking specifically about the boundary, western boundary issues, that is kind of a body of regulation that I want to discuss separately, similarly, how we approach septic tank design and permitting and regulations. A chunk of those regulations that we want to look at somewhat separately, but one of the things we can do today with this meeting, I hope, is kind of have a work session how we want to carve up that roast as we move forward out of waterfront protection, planning into off protection regulation. Okay, so if there are no additions, corrections to the agenda, I hope for motion to approve. I move to approve. Is there a second? For the discussion, all favors say aye.
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 Approve, moving along to minutes, and I don't have much to contribute because I wasn't here, but command, rooms for a complete set of minutes, and since I've kind of tested, like, agreed those in some sense of what we actually did, so, thank you for laying those out such such good detail. The only correction I had was just as reading through, I don't have those front of me, but on page eighteen, it was a spell check, it says duly instead of duly. So, since we know that scholars in the future will be reading this, chair. So, other comments, corrections, changes, please go ahead.
So, on page eight of the minutes, number thirty-six. There's a word, a number, it has three buttons per, doesn't say the feet acres.
Got it.
And then also on that page, numbers forty and forty-one. I think we're talking about the APOZ boundary, but.
That is the growth level. Growth plan boundary.
And then, page ten. In the middle there. Nine points, one, two, three. It says, doesn't mean they have to act on them, they can choose not to. And page fourteen, my name's. And I really appreciate the detail.
Where?
Uh, page fourteen of the minutes.
Like the middle?
Yeah.
Surprise I haven't looked at that. Others?
I have several.
Page seven, item twenty-one. It reads, any incorporation of city code, I like to see city building code. On page eight, item thirty-seven. In the last sentence, change was to were, yes, staff, if there was, if there were comments. Page seventeen, item FF. It reads sewer lines recognizes as a high priority, and. I'm going to just suggest we say sewer lines change from high priority to low priority. That's all.
Mr. Chair, I, I have a couple edits.
Please go ahead.
On page two, Roman numeral four, the second paragraph of disclosures. Just change the word second to septic, I think it was probably one of those auto spell corrects. But you should say this, the septic study, as opposed to the second study. And then, on page thirteen. The very last bullet, where it discusses Chris Moody commenting on our discussion. Although he did not introduce himself as the Chair of the City Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment. I, I think it merits mentioning it because our public comment period had closed, and I don't think we would have entertained comments had it not been from our sister commission that we're trying to coordinate with. Is that acceptable to do when the person didn't identify themselves that way?
Yep, got it.
That's, that's all I had, thanks.
Also, I had a job, great job.
Good job, you guys, I didn't catch any of those.
I think Mr. Harris would probably second that, he's been on charge with trying to recreate the record in many cases, and sometimes we treat them casually, and then somebody goes back and says, oh, wait, system, it says right here. What is it our mothers used to say, make your words sweet because you don't know which ones you later have to eat? Okay, other comments on the minutes, corrections, thank you, those were all excellent, and it shows rooms that we're reading his work with trade chair. Is there motion to approve the minutes as amended?
I vote aye.
Seconded to approve the motion, minutes as amended, for the discussion. All favors say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Conflicts of interest, it shouldn't be my stare, we don't have any current planning projects. But let's, let's do a round robin, I, I've noted that some of the more expansive public comments we got, there was concern about bias on the commission, so, so I guess I would offer my way of disclosures, did I, no property of aquifer, my interest in waterfront protection is, is well known, but it is based on being one of thirty-plus thousand citizens of wherever that depend on the quality of water that I get when I open tap, so I don't have any special financial personal interest or do it in respect to the aquifer or anything else that has come before creation at this point, so. Ms. Hanning, you want to take some opportunity to share anything with us? No is a perfectly acceptable answer.
I, I guess I don't really have anything to disclose. I don't feel like I have any conflicts of interest, I, I just live right outside the APOZ. But I, I have a, you know, a twelve-year history of working in, in state government protecting water quality, and so my, my motives are, are pretty transparent that way, I'd say, thanks.
In that vein, I would note that several of us were explicitly appointed to this commission because of our side background, so there's no inherent conflict in having that kind of background, that in fact is fully appropriate to bring that background, and I applaud those who are willing to apply the science that they require to, to, hopefully, good. Mr. Kornick?
I don't think that's coming.
Same story, I live on Aquifer, and I'm very concerned and, and motivated to maintain water quality and water delivery.
Okay, thank you all. Applications, we have, oh. Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said same, same. Go right in, Mr. Platt.
Who I also would point out.
I don't have anything to disclose, and I'm just a citizen living in the city with second order interest of any other citizen in my league. And I would point out, Mr. Platt, too, comes with a technical background in engineering, so we have a lot of. First power off. Correction, I just, I just knew that, so I said it to myself. Okay. Applications, we have none, so we could go into current planning projects, the first one on the agenda is something we have been exploring its uses. Accessory dwelling standards, Mr. Gerch has prepared for us now something more specifically focused, so, church, tell us what you can.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, first, I apologize about the agenda, I didn't make the agenda of those bullet points under the aqua protection, but it's still in the file, and it didn't make it.
On the online one.
Is it on the online one? Okay, anyways, the effort was there, but I think it was the end of the day, we're trying to get things out, and I, yeah, so that was my fault. Anyways, yeah, so on to accessory dwelling. You know, so, I provided you a little bit of a packet of information, just to add to the discussion. Okay, so, so our last meeting, we just, or actually, not our last meeting, but in, on the April twelfth meeting, we discussed the proposing accessory dwelling standards, of particular concern, there was the neighborhood compatibility issue that came up, increasing the density of the, in these areas, and clarity of definitions. So staff did make some changes to the proposed amendments, and tried to address some of these concerns, I'm not sure if they were fully. You know, but what you guys are looking for, and, and obviously, I mean, your input on, on these areas and additional verbiage, and, you know, I would love to have all of that. In addition, I did look at the comprehensive plan, there are, I mean, the comprehensive plan promotes mixed housing types, and also housing that can accommodate future growth. So the potential to create additional housing opportunities through accessory dwellings is consistent with these objectives. And then, GAS, I have my jury from our office, I will note that there's Eric, his first name, I spelled it wrong, there should be in there. But he looked at the county GS data as it pertains to properties that have more than one dwelling, he put together some maps just to kind of show where there's, there's these parcels that have multiple dwellings, and he kind of split those out, the maps itself, I think, show between zero and thirty-five acres where there's multiple dwellings, and then there's another section where they're over thirty-five, and there's multiple dwellings. But some of the data that he, he collected, there are approximately a hundred and forty-one properties with two or more dwellings on their property, and this was based on the GS analyst analysis that he used, and what he looked at was addresses, so, I mean, there's a potential that some of these houses don't exist anymore, or there's an address there for another reason. He did try to go through and vet that information, but, so we're, we're getting an estimate here of what we have. And then, let's see, I got the maps in the back, I kind of described. And most of these properties are basically properties that before two thousand and fifteen, they, they put the, the second dwelling on the property, so it could have been nineteen eighty and anywhere, you know, before two thousand and fifteen, I mean, two thousand and fifteen, that was when, when the option to have that second dwelling was eliminated per right, so the right to do that was no longer available without some additional permitting and, and specific zoning that has to be in. Also, there's a, the number of parcels outside of city boundaries is approximately seven thousand four hundred and seventy-one parcels. Now again, this is based on the assessor's data, and the assessor oftentimes will take deeded properties and lump them into one property for taxation purposes because there's one owner, so there might be two or three properties, so there's probably more parcels than that. But just to point out that there's, this data is not, you know, a hundred percent accurate, but it gives us a good estimate. The hundred and forty-four, forty-one properties constitutes less than two percent of the properties outside of city limits. So it's really a small percentage of, of properties that have additional dwellings on them right now. Um, also, so when the, the updated zoning was approved in two thousand and fifteen, and this, again, update eliminated that opportunity to have a second dwelling. And currently, a second dwelling, or second residence is allowed on properties owned agricultural. So it's one per thirty-five acres, so if they have seventy acres, they can legally have two get two zoning certificates and have two residences on the property as a right, and then rural residential where, where they have ten acres or more in size. And then they get an additional conditional use permit, and then there's only certificate, they're allowed to have that second residence on the property.
And we, they were talking about second residences, not a, a full-size residence, right?
Correct, yeah, yeah. And then, on commercial property, you can have, you can have, you know, multifamily dwellings, single-family dwellings, as long as you get, you have to get a conditional use, I believe, or single-family dwellings on commercial property, but you can have multiple dwellings on commercial property. And then, second dwellings are prohibited on, in urban residential, smaller residential, or industrial property. Since the update, the zoning, the zoning resolution, the board of county commissioners approved seven zoning change applications, or zoning district amendment that, that's what we called it in Arizona, change back then, but, and then eleven conditional use applications for the second dwelling, and none of these applications that were submitted for this purpose were ever denied to date, I mean, obviously, you know, who knows what comes before us and what the decision will be. So, just the, the, the points that I kind of wanted just to, to bring out is, the Albany County Conference of Plan does support accessory dwelling units, or dwellings. There are properties that are less than thirty-five acres in size that already have more than one dwelling, but the number of properties is very low percentage of the total number of properties within county jurisdiction. And then, accessory dwelling regulations, as currently proposed, would alleviate the need to change the zoning while continuing to provide additional oversight through the conditional use process. Staff prefers removal of the conditional use process to promote additional dwellings to provide the, the need of housing, however, we obviously realize the opportunity to have a little bit of oversight in that as well, and that was what kind, kind of came out from our last meeting, is, is there was more of a desire, I think, to have a conditional use process to get a second dwelling, then to, or additional dwelling, than to just allow them as, as rights, so that was included, except, I think, I believe in the agricultural zone, I think it was a little bit different in there, but. Anyway, so the next steps is to continue the discussion, we can work through this, if we like it, we can move it on, if we don't, we can continue discussion, discuss it, if you don't want to deal with it anymore, we can throw it out there, so. But I would hope that we just continue this discussion to the point where we get something that we can move on, that would be my, my hope and my recommendation. So with that, you've got the maps and things to look at, and the draft regulations are in here. And yeah, I would take any questions, comments, I mean, we can go through the, this document, whatever you'd like to use.
Thank you, should we just do a round robin in, in order, Ms. Hanning, if you've got anything specific that I could, where to?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Gerch, for the, the thorough packet of information, but in the, the maps were really helpful as well. Um, I guess my, my only comments are, in the definition section, would it be useful to include in the definition for the accessory dwelling, dwelling comma accessory, that it is not a legally conveyable property? The, for the principal dwelling, you're explicit in saying that it is, and so I'm just wondering if we want to be explicit and say that it is not for accessory dwellings. So that's one, one, one thing to consider. Then, in.
Is that, is that correct, just to jump in, is that?
Oh, yeah, I guess, is, is that true?
So, I don't know if that would, I mean, we wanted to find what an accessory dwelling is, we're not defining what the property, what you can and can't do in the property in the definitions, now, now, that would be something where I think it would be more appropriate in the standards that we do not allow conveyance of accessory dwelling unless they go through the properly required subdivision process, basically. So I, I guess I don't, I mean, by, I, I guess I don't think it's appropriate maybe in the definitions, but it would be appropriate in the standards.
So like in the, in the prohibition section, or, or make a whole new paragraph for it in the, in the standards?
Um, let me just kind of look through that real quick, so, I mean, you could just have a standard. Because our standards, and we've got purpose, we've got the zoning district talks about that, principal dwellings, number of accessory dwellings. I mean, somewhere in there, we could just put you know, division of property, I mean, just note in that, it's like, that the approval of an accessory dwelling does not constitute a subdivision of property, a subdivision would have to go through the proper subdivision process and meet all zoning standards and all that stuff. I, I think something like that, we could do that, if that would be, what address your, your concerns?
Yeah, no, that, that sounds like it, it would, thank you. My only other comment is the addition of the new section eight to, to chapter six in the discussion F for minimum lot size. I just, I just wanted to see what other members think and have a discussion about whether, whether four acres is too small, for me, from the standpoint of how many septic systems should coexist in a certain density, I, I would prefer to see ten, ten acres, so that each system. so that each system had its own five-acre area. But I don't know what other members think of that, or, you know, going through the list of the existing ones. There was a fair number of, of existing accessory dwellings on ten acres up to thirty-five acres. But by and large, it seems like a lot of them are, are on smaller acreage. The, I guess another question I have on the two, two, Roman numeral, little i's, two little i's. What you're thinking was on having, having that acreage linked to either centralized water or centralized sewer as opposed to, to both of them. And in places like Seven Mile, Twelve Mile, where people are getting city water and their, their agreement with the city is for X number of taps. I mean, I, I guess this is a matter between those, those water districts in the city. It's not, it's not us. I see Mr. Air's nodding as have vigorously. But are, you know, are we potentially making a, a train wreck out of that? Or, I mean, I, I think the city is behind on renegotiating those agreements. And maybe they are fine with giving out more water to accessory dwellings. But I, I just wondered if we were creating a potential conflict there. But mostly I wondered why, why you're doing an or there instead of an and.
Yeah. So, Mr. Chair, so follow my thread for a second. The, the double I or the triple I?
It's the, it's the double I. In the triple I, you, you do have the, that they're both required to have that oh, how many square feet of, of size. And I'm, I'm fine with the triple I that, because that, that would take care of my concerns about the septic, the handled with centralized wastewater.
Okay. So, yeah, to, to answer your, your question, this, this is kind of how our current urban residential zoning is set up. And so I, I follow that pattern with the or. Because in the, the current, I believe the urban residential allows us to have you know, one acre lot size if you have centralized water or, you know, a center, not centralized. Oh, yeah. Yeah. If you have either a centralized water system or a centralized wastewater system, then one acre is what we allow in the urban residential. So that, that was the, that was the thinking behind this. We're just kind of following the same pattern. Now, the numbers in here are obviously not static. We can, we can change those. I mean, you made the comment about the four acres. I mean, I maybe would argue less than ten acres, but, but yeah, like, any of those numbers can change. And then, you know, it's up to this commission how they want to go forward with, with some of that. And, and maybe this is, you know, maybe we want to look at a different way of doing this. Maybe we just stick to, you have to have ten acres period, you know, I mean. But yeah, but that, that's kind of how this was kind of thought through.
Okay. And thanks, thanks for that explanation. I guess I, I'd have to think about that some more and I don't know what other members maybe have on their minds regarding the two little i's. I guess the only other thing I would wonder about building into this would be having, you know, having a smaller acreage allowed in the growth, the, the Laramie growth area. Because presumably that would eventually get tied to city water and sewer someday. So, you know, like, I'm a little more comfortable with increasing density in that area than I would be out in the other parts of the county. But that's, that's all I am contemplating right now on this. Thanks.
Mr. Chair. I guess I'd ask, add one more thing. You know, the four, four acres, where that came from was, I mean, kind of the the smallest lot we want to go to with the, a septic system and a well on it. Two acres is just like that, that right, right size to, so you can fit your septic and well on it. Now that, that's not taking into account like nitrates and all of that stuff. But, but I know like D E Q, I mean, they'll tell you like two acres is kind of, you know, the minimum. We really want to have both of those on there. And it, and it gives you enough space to get a hundred foot setback from your well, your leach field and your well and those types of things. So that's, again, that's where that came from. And in our rural residential zone, we also, we allow from two acre lot sizes. But that's, that's typically for the one, this would obviously double the density you'd have, have an accessory dwelling as well as that. So which, which then I guess you, yeah, the lot size would be two. And so this being four, you could have two in a four acre area, two residences. So that, that's where that came from. I just wanted to explain that, I guess.
Oh, just to pick up on that a minute, in, in, I understand rural residential zoning is five acre man of law.
Average.
Average. Say, two acre man of laws was correct. Okay. So even in rural residential, it could have a whole cluster of two acre lots. Which this would preclude an A D U on one of those ones. Because of that before.
Sure, that's incorrect.
Even though you're in a kind of a five acre average.
Right.
Mr. Plant, do you have something specific?
I do. Looking at section eight, item C or something, or C or five. It refers to within. And not be allowed within. Yes. So what, what is actually within? So Joe and I have talked about this. So to us, if you have two dwellings in the same building, now you're looking at a multifamily dwelling unit. So we would, we would permit it that way instead of allowing an accessory dwelling within it. I mean, that was, that was kind of our thought is like, well, now we're, we're allowing a multi-family dwelling. I mean, it's kind of the same as, I guess, having another building on there with the dwelling unit as well.
Okay. Well, I certainly not saying I'm an expert in these because I'm not. But I, I guess it's fairly common in other places where you see people pop, get doing a pop top. In a living unit up where used to be just the X space or conversely converting a basement in A D U. And I'm wondering why we wouldn't accommodate that sort of thing.
I mean, we could. And I, and like you said, I have seen that in other regulations. Some places do allow the in, in-house extra dwelling and some places do not. So, I mean, we just, we, we're just starting with, with that. So, I mean, if, if that's a, that's what we want to do, then.
Also, we talked about how we don't have codes, so we don't technically have to see what's going inside. People are already doing this, we know it. And, but on our zoning certificates, we care about the box and the setbacks and that kind of stuff. So there's not really much we can ask for more, in our opinion, like, you know, what's going on.
That's actually one of the reasons why I asked, because if we allowed something within, depending what, how we define within, we would be encouraged to come forward if they want to do that rather than just having to do it. It's basically a light away to regulate, where it hurts to conform, you know, with regulations. We know what we're known better.
Yeah.
Allow.
But I guess we, from my opinion, I guess, if people are living, and I get this in college town, people do rent out basements and that kind of stuff, but normally it's more family. I would think living in a basement, like in the same building.
What would you think about conversion of an attached garage? That being considered within your mind?
It's still part of the.
Attached.
Yeah, if it's attached, it's still part of.
How about a semi-detached garage?
That may be a different.
I don't know. I think we'd have to define these things. These are the things that come into our office, like, well, is this attached? I mean. Yeah. I mean, if it's, it's truly attached and you got a door under the house, then it's part of the house. I don't know. We don't think about that, I guess.
So remind us where we are with multifamily. So we, are we, I guess where I hear this going is, would we allow a separate building? Not multifamily.
Correct.
That's what we have right now.
The multifamily, we could, you could have multifamily on ten acres right now and if you had a conditional use, I think, in rural residential, but then it's all of those hoops or whatever.
It's allowed in commercial A D U.
Well, just to me, just my opinion, if you put in an A D U, inside or outside, that's an A D U, that's not a multifamily building. It was developed aside. I would not consider this to be the same thing. I wouldn't call it a multifamily dwelling personally.
I, I guess that if it's a conversion after the fact, that could be problematic. Because when they design a septic system, they design it based on the number of bedrooms. If you add an additional bedroom or more, now you're adding something that's going to most likely be over what that system was designed.
Be required, we could oppose.
It could be.
Make sure the septic system's adequate.
Right, right. I mean, and all of this stuff is super hard for us to, like, we know what's in a building, you know? I mean, somebody could say, hey, I want to do an A D U and they're in our building. It's like, okay. And they really have like four apartments, you know, we just don't know, you know?
So, could I just? So what if you don't increase the number of bedrooms? Like, like my husband and I are empty investors. House is too big, children are gone. We wouldn't, so what if we wanted to turn the basement into, you know, make a little kitchen down there and make that an A D U? Without adding any bedrooms. Septic was designed for more people.
Technically, it would be multifamily.
Yeah, I mean, technically it'd be multifamily. I mean, so.
Our definition of that is a building containing two or more dwelling units.
If, yeah.
But then, we do have, you know, that would have less effect on building, another building and another septic and all that.
True. I mean, if you're using the existing septic, it would be easier for everybody, right? I mean, yeah, because we don't go by kitchens or anything else. And really like to design a septic just based on bedrooms. I mean, you can have five bedrooms and two person living in there. Or you can have a three-bedroom house like mine and have eight providing people. So, you know, I mean. Yeah. But, and, and I guess what I would say is we're not totally against the idea. It's just, I think we would have to look more at how our, our multifamily dwelling standards are. And how do we make sure that, that what they're doing is a lesser portion of the building than, you know, the main living area, right? Right. I mean, yeah, there are standards and definitions.
Yeah. No, I, I'm, I'm actually thinking of A D Us in a completely different light, I guess, than maybe most of the people are. To me, when I think of A D U, I think mostly in terms of add own to an existing building or a conversion of some portion of an existing building rather than a whole separate building. I realize it could be either, either of those things. So when I think of an A D U, I think again, like, yeah, taking it upstairs or garage and putting it in the kitchen or bathroom or a basement or a pop top or things like that, rather than entirely second building with an entirely separate septic system. Separate well, you know, I'm, I'm thinking of someone who wants to use their existing stuff. Again, as long as the septic system is designed for that initial use, going that way.
Which could be part of the permitting, checking sizes.
Right.
Make sure it matches the.
And then I guess. So my, my final comment sort of is like, I mentioned what Maro was just talking about. Because of the way I'm looking at it, I was wondering why you had raised the minimum lot sizes from two acres to four acres. I, to me, I would stick with two acre minimums for rural residential and small lot residential. Again, with an eye of you're adding on something or converting something inside the principal dwelling rather than creating an entire separate, completely serviceable second dwelling. Yeah. So those are all my comments. We may come back around, but let's make sure we get everything on the table.
Potentially, yeah.
Well, that's one of my questions. Moving on to the G there, the size. I was going to suggest, it says, right now it says the A D U should not exceed twelve hundred square feet. We used to have a seventy-five percent of the principal dwelling. Did we say seventy-five percent of the principal dwelling size? Or twelve hundred square feet, whichever is smaller.
We had that one before.
We did.
Yeah, we, I think it was fifteen hundred square feet and seventy-five percent.
We just dropped it down to twelve hundred.
Because you don't really want.
Either way.
Yeah, because if you have a huge mansion and I convert something.
It should be smaller than.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we talked about that too. The size. And I think it was mostly if, basically if you can afford to, to do this, you're not going to have a twelve hundred square foot house. You're going to have a bigger massive house, probably. So I guess that's what we were thinking.
But not necessarily, I guess. But yeah, I mean, twelve hundred square feet is not.
So we do want the whichever is smaller.
Yes.
That would be important.
Yeah. Because it was larger.
And yeah, ten thousand square foot, now you have a seventy-five hundred square foot accessory dwelling. Well, I was wondering about, so, so you could have two septic systems on one acre. At some place that has centralized water, like, standing was talking about the.
Yes. I mean, I think if it's a little property. I mean, and it makes it easier to fit on the property if you have central as large, you're not trying to get setbacks of a hundred feet from a well. But potentially, yeah. And maybe that should be, but, I mean, if you leave it like this, we could bump it up to like two acres.
Yeah, I don't want to be arbitrary, but that seems crowded for septic systems.
They also have to be the fifty foot from.
Property lines in. Everything's up for discussion in here, so.
Maybe in some places that would be okay and some places not. I don't really know. Is, is Nine Mile the lake out there?
Yes.
So it's near a water source.
Well, their water source is actually the city of Laramie.
But the lake is there. If you had a.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Sure, sure. I mean, there, there are setbacks from any type of water. Water thing, yeah, I think it's fifty feet from.
Okay. Well, I'd like to hear what you think. Two, two septic systems on an acre seems.
Yeah, that's, we have the two acres, so I think we should go with that.
That would work. I have no problems with that, so.
So my concern was very similar to the question I had about the Laramie landfill plan. How are we going to integrate that, given that we don't really know? Plan would be, don't have specifics, right? Can we somehow coordinate, integrate, figure it out? Before opening this to public hearing and voting and all that, can we move on on the other one?
Put this in for that.
Put in, put this in when we know what's happening. You know, unless, I mean, because as soon as we'll make this a regulation, people will stop. Well, maybe not based on their data that nobody has applied or built since they apply. But I can see people applying and we have to approve applications, but then, you know, the growth area plan will look something totally different. So in, in my mind, and maybe a little gigantic. If we are going to go with a plan, especially if it's all on soil plan, why start worrying about These things are phenomenal, it's covering up.
So, Mr. Chair. Um, this, this is not just for that area, I mean, this would be countywide, it would not be just in the growth area. Um.
Yeah.
I mean, if we feel like it's appropriate to wait to do that and then to do this. I mean, I, I guess that's okay, but I, I think this is kind of a separate issue and it's not really addressed in the growth plan and it wasn't supposed to be part of the growth plan. Um, growth plan's more for extension and development of land, where this is, or extension of utilities, water, sewer. And then um development of land. This is more for just allowing someone to have that extra dwelling on the property. Uh, anywhere in the county, not, not necessarily within the growth area. And, you know, if we don't think it's appropriate to be outside of that growth area, then yeah, maybe that's, this is a different discussion, maybe we do wanna integrate that. Um, but if we're okay with like having additional, you know, dwellings at other places in the county. And there's, there's quite a few places in the county that I would say that it would be. Worthwhile to consider a centennial area where they're on water and sewer and, and centennial, um, some, some of that area. Um, and then you've also got nine mile, seven mile, which are both in areas that have um waters, systems in. South, um, south of Laramie, south of Laramie would be the growth area, but, yeah. Um, but you know, those areas, I mean, I think where we already have services, I mean, more density and additional opportunities, I think. We want to point people to those areas. Um, so, I mean, I guess I would want this to apply to those areas as well as, you know, the growth area. And maybe the growth area has a whole different kind of look, I don't know. But um, I don't know, I think they're separate issues. But, you know, that's up to this.
There's. Okay, I, I.
Yeah.
So. Walk us through. Why was this option eliminated twenty fifteen? What was the thinking behind getting us through here now? Somebody must have had some good reasons.
Sorry. Uh, I'd have to go back and look or see notes, I'm not quite certain.
Maybe somebody just said, hey, what are we?
Yeah, I mean, I think it was a discussion, maybe at planning and zoning level that, okay, we just want to do this, or.
Oh, I, I remember not me, you're right, but we originally were talking about this pertaining to duplexes a year ago now. We had a private email exchange, email exchange, where you mentioned the two thousand fifteen, my memory, yeah, if you're wrong, was. It was just tabled. For correction, or something like that. It wasn't denied or turned, turned down, it's just stopped.
Oh, no, we're, I think, so you said the twenty five, it's twenty fifteen.
Yeah, I mean, I'm picking up my description, I think.
You're talking about after two thousand fifteen, cuz we tried to put this opportunity back in.
Yeah.
And then it got stalled because of. Yeah, it, it went to the Board of County Commissioners and they tabled indefinitely.
That's what I'm, that's what.
Yes. Yeah, but in two, twenty fifteen, I don't remember the discussion.
So, but, but let's rewind the tape correctly, prior to that. It was allowed as a conditional use, or it was just.
It was, and it was an allowed use, so somebody had two acres of land and they had one dwelling on it, they would come in and they could have a second one.
That was true, rural residential, small lot act.
There was only one residential zone then, so there, there was not small lot act, or, I mean, there was ag, I think it was ag, industrial, commercial, and. Residential, those were the zones.
At that point, when we broke up those ags, those residential zones were this.
Right.
Okay.
Uh, which is weird because like, I mean, we really should have allowed more of this in urban residential because of, you know. It has the services potentially, you know? Um, but, yeah.
Well, that was, yeah, I can't remember. General action, the whole thing, it's the same as, as Fisher last suggestion of. Additional dwelling units for multifamily dwellings. We seem to have a concept in our minds, what this thing is, and it's, it's an apartment over the garage or a place for other to. Come and, literally take care of her, the kids, I mean, we have this notion, and I'm anxious that our definitions capture that. Because as per zoning. If you find the envelope, you have to be like to accept filling the envelope. There was the example, uh, but. Sandy and I were on a piece of flowers, the guy wanted, he didn't like the house, he was on his thirty-five acre lot, so he came in. To build a second dwelling unit, it was not allowed, and the only option he had was to apply for a rural subdivision. Well, the, the reaction, I think, of this commission was, well, all he wants to do is just build a second house. But, and that's all very nice, but what we gave that gentleman was permission to build an eight lot subdivision. Seven lots could be as small as two acres.
Absolutely.
If he had, had offered to do that, his neighbors, I think, would have just.
Right.
Hit the roof. And then they come to the county, the county would have said, nothing we can do about it. We crossed that bridge when we rezoned that rural residential, so my concern here is that we. We try to get our arms around this thing that we all sort of, I know it when I see it, as an additional dwelling. Secondly, it, it feels the same to me as the multifamily. It's a way to accommodate additional residences, and whether they share a wall or not, I don't see that as large, I maybe. Five, that's, I think we're on that same track. And then my approach all along has been that. Zoning serves the purpose of limiting gets. Before I was on the commission. So the audience, and I was struck by a proposal that came forward, again, it was one of these putting a second dwelling on, and a gentleman made a, I think, a very. Strong case, ultimately unsuccessfully, that, that he and his wife had bought a piece of ground. Zone for thirty-five acres. And deliberately, they looked at a lot of properties around, they loved the idea of being out there, all their neighbors were gonna be way over there, over there. Maybe using Mississauga or like to play music loud at night, and so he objected to, wait a minute, that just wasn't the deal that I thought it. So. My thoughts go towards, this is more appropriate for smaller lots than bigger lots, cuz they're buying those bigger lots cuz they like the big lots. The second thread of that would be, I like that condition because the neighbors, they don't get a veto when they get to play. Rather than us just by rights saying. And, and there's a comment in here. On, it was on the offer for those folks out in North Fork. And we've heard repeatedly from them over the years about my neighbors putting in rentals, and you can't allow that. People were driving by the ability of, no, I haven't had a lot of sense of that, but there's certainly a lot of folks. The county don't like the idea of additional dwelling units, additional houses, or people, and all those things that we're zoned for. So anyway, I'd like to see the definitions as tightly uh wrapped around those notions as we can. As far as the comp plan, when it says. Promote mixed housing, I don't see more housing as the next particular, that sounds more like multifamily housing rather than just. Second dwelling, so I don't like, it's not, you're mixed, but then it's straight, it's mixed. And this common notion of much-needed housing. It goes to Chris and David's comment about the growth plan. We hear that constantly brought up. But the data that I've seen suggests that there's a much-needed housing in the Laramie community, it's gonna be solved by Laramie. Not by additional or lots being made available. And it's, it's, the price points are just completely different. I mean, so, do we have evidence to suggest that there is much-needed housing of this sort?
I mean, we're all part of the Laramie community, so any additional dwellings is gonna provide and alleviate some of the pressure on. Um, housing and then people trying to find rentals and those types of things, so. I don't think we can differentiate between Laramie and the outskirts of Laramie, it's all part of the same community, we all have the same problem. And I think this helps to alleviate some of that, and, and I agree, it's really the city of Laramie's problem to, to really work on and, and fix. But that doesn't mean that we can't be a part of the solution.
Well, but it is to the growth plan and those price points, that the city, I would argue that the county does not need. For five hundred thousand dollar enough properties. Now, there are people who buy them, and there's a market for that, certainly, but, but when we talk about. Housing, often we talk affordable housing. Uh, so, again, that's just a philosophical point that I, I don't know that we, as Albany County, particularly when we're looking at changing the density of our, our. Low-gas zoning for rural residential, uh, can, can really say, we're doing this to help out. Mr. Eric, do you wanna weigh in on this?
Yeah, um. So, really, I think that Mr. Gurg is correct that this is, is a separate thing from the growth plan. Um, the growth plan is triggered through subdivision.
Is there any other? Um, maybe a zoning district amendment.
Oh, a zoning district amendment, yeah, that as well. Um, so it's really when you're looking to change, you know, the fundamental nature of the property, it's only district. Um, so, you know, this, this is different from the subdivision, and there are already places within the growth area as it's proposed right now where. You know, it's probably never gonna meet its mark um of, of the aspiration that it become, you know, a full. Fully dense city block. Um, you know, you're just not, you would have to get a bunch of little. You know, two acre properties, mass them all together under a single ownership, tear all that down and then develop it, and. Really, we don't see that kind of development in Laramie. Maybe on the front range from your south, but you don't see that here. Um, so this wouldn't really have any implication under the growth plan. It'd still be, if someone wanted to subdivide that property, then the growth plan kicks in, but under the ADU. Um, it, it would not, um, and I did just find briefly. Uh, from the American Planning Association that they said, yeah, there, there is some research which in, or there is research which uh indicates that. ADUs do increase the supply um of affordable housing. Uh, and further, I found a Harvard Law Review article from twenty twenty-two. Um. Which addresses this, uh, Mr. Platt alluded to it, I think during our last conversation, where there are a lot of states that are coming for, through. State-level legislation telling municipalities um that if it is zoned single-family residential. You will allow all level of multifamily ADU, anything, like you cannot put a ceiling. Or sorry, floor on that density. Or, no, it wouldn't be a ceiling in that case, yeah, my apologies, but, um, so this is a, a very common trend, I think, throughout the country right now. Uh, is to allow for, for use. More like creative ways to, to increase density.
Um, and we distinguish municipalities from counties. I totally agree with what you're saying with respect to municipalities, I think that, that's where we concentrate folks. And, and to my mind, the, the common thread between the growth plan, this subject is conceptual, not, not legal. And we have in the comp plan these priority growth areas. Uh, we have centennial, we have growth plan, so if we are looking to densify these specific areas, then let's target it. Observe, so it's kind of like the growth plan. Conceptually, although it's not a growth plan, so it seems to be that the relevance is that. We have identified areas, specific areas in the county, where we want to promote. Growth, where it can be more easily accommodated, we're not building subdivisions that unduly burden the taxpayers to provide. Purchase services. Passing and all of the things. Cuz every, every time we increase the population out in the county, and I, I think there was a very, very useful study that should be updated. That is part of the open space issue of the Hobbs School, where they calculated that non-agricultural rural residences in Albany County. Burdened the county with a dollar twenty-one service costs for every buck that they produced in terms of taxes. So again, there's a, and I'm objective that we're all in this together, but it's a bit of a myth that, that when we increase our rural density. That generates tax revenues sufficient to provide sufficient services that it demands, so we are.
Subsidized.
We are subsidizing all of that in, in small ways, and subsidies run in a million different directions, there are ten below those, but. We should just be aware, I think, of this, we sound in the county, of the importance of concentrating that. Population increase in places where efficiently served and. That's what the priority growth area is all about, so anyway, that's quite a wide-ranging philosophical statement, that'd be my reaction.
I'll just turn that around, okay, I, I'm sorry, but.
You're waiting.
I believe the thrust this came out of Joe and David telling me. You'll be, I'm, maybe we correct this, that this is what they're seeing again and again and again for people who are currently coming down wanting to do. Rather than the county trying to create affordable housing or playing with whatnot, this is what people want to do with their property. I think that is something we should take into much account. People should be allowed to do what their property, you know, with a reason. And I think adding all an ADU is certainly within reason of, regardless of what it might do for housing costs or accounting costs or density like that. Sorry, David. Paul, then tell us about that. It's all a problem. Okay, so yeah, let, let me give you some examples of, of what we've, we've heard. Um, we've had um families come in and say, hey, I got a large family. Um, I would really like to have um this, you know, extra little dwelling on, over here so that one of my kids can stay there while he's. Doing whatever, I don't know, going to school or whatever, once he gets to that age. Um, I've heard that, and I'm like, well, we can't fit that in there cuz you don't have ten acres and, you know, you can't do that. Um, other things we've heard, especially like out in Wild Horse Ranch, it's like, well, we wanted to just build another cabin for my brother, so I wanted to have one, my brother wanted to have one, but. You're saying I can only have one on this thirty-five acre, forty acre piece? Yeah, unless you go through this, this process and get it changed to rural residential, which, again, is not the best way to do it. Um, and, you know, those are the types of things that we're hearing, it, it's, and, and, you know, we could limit this to, you know. Yeah, maybe it's a five hundred thousand dollar property, but if we limit it to someone that, you know, someone has to, that owns the property, has to live on the property, and I don't know if I have that in here or not. But, you know, you, you'd have something else that's a little bit smaller, so you're not, you're not selling the twelve hundred square foot house. Um, it's still part of the bigger property, it's not being divided. Um, in, in, you know, the density thing, um, and the character of the neighborhood and all of that. Um, we want these in places that are already developed, well, it's already developed, there's already a house on property, so adding that additional dwelling, you know, is not necessarily. Um, you, I mean, I guess if, if it's a weird parcel out in the middle of nowhere, it's like, you know, family subdivisions, five acres out in the middle of this. Thing, you're adding one more house to it or whatever, I mean, I guess that's different than, than usually these are gonna happen already developed area, right? They're already developed, there's already houses all around it, it's not really gonna be much of a burden on emergency services and all those things, because it's already in an area that was developed, you know, for a subdivision or, or whatever, but. Um, so, so yeah, I mean, tho- those are just kind of some of my thoughts to that, and, and we do hear these things, we do, I mean. I mean, a lot of the ones that we've approved too have been like, well, I wanna have another cabin, cuz I'm up in northern, you know, Albany County, up in your Laramie Peak, and I wanna have another cabin. We've had that come through and, and approved, you know? Uh, additional dwellings, not really additional dwellings, but I, I guess it's an additional dwelling, it's another dwelling, um, but through. The zoning process and then the conditional use. Um, and, and really what you're saying, I'm sure you're equally too, about like kind of limited to some of these areas, I mean. We could actually employ the prior growth, growth area one, two, and three, and create something where it's like, you can only do these things in there, I mean, we'd have to adopt those. Those, you know, into the zoning.
My proposal.
Whatever, but, um, yeah.
Exactly what I said.
Right.
Integrated into a growth.
Yeah, I mean.
That's the comp plan.
That's the comp plan, yeah.
The priority growth areas, because that's for areas that are outside of.
Yeah, but you could do the same thing with the growth plan. We could use that that boundary and say, this is the only place that we're doing this in this boundary. I mean, you you could do that. I mean, you'd have to adopt that boundary. So, I mean, that's kind of where I'm at with all of these things. You know, I really don't want to make it too complicated. I mean, this was just a com, you know, something that came up. This is something other communities are doing. Again, yes, most of the density, you know, I know ninety percent of it probably shouldn't happen in the city. That's where the services are. But we do have places with services that may, you know, to have additional dwellings, not not a bad thing, you know. We should guide people to those instead of the areas that are out in the middle of nowhere. There's no water. They have, you know, just doesn't make a whole lot of sense, but I don't know. Those are my thoughts, I guess. I don't know if I answered your question. I talked a lot.
I agree, and I just think if we can make the language say what you're saying, I think we're thinking that would be the tweaks that I'm thinking of. One of us, Ms. Hanning, you haven't weighed in much. You got something after this?
No, I actually have been enjoying the conversation and for something that David hopes would be simple, it it really isn't.
Never is.
We'll get there. Since we have your commissioners here, correction, yes, uh, sense of the commissioners, what what why did you guys think about ADUs?
Well, I can't speak for the commission. I'm actually in favor of them. I think it is a way of providing for those families who do want to bring in other family members, whether they're elderly or their own kids, providing a means of having somewhat a place of their own because we don't have much affordable housing for these young people in the greater community and specifically Laramie. I think it's a way of alleviating some of that. And again, I'm just speaking for myself. I'm not speaking for the commission in any way.
So where do we go from here? Are you feeling, Mr. Gurge, like we have some ideas to develop further? At some point, we'll want to come to some specific motions and take some votes and everybody just have to be happy.
Yeah, I mean, if there's any specific items that you would like me to explore, I mean, that would that would be awesome if I got a little bit of direction. I mean, I think we've made a few things that I've I've noted down, like the seventy five percent or lesser seventy eight percent or twelve hundred square feet. Sounds like, you know, the two acre deal with centralized water or wastewater system. Potentially bump up that other, that four acre. Whatever. I guess that's been a mixed bag from you guys or whatever. Maybe bump up the definition. I mean, if there's specific things you want me to kind of identify, I think I'll go back and listen to what we're talking about tonight. That's the great thing about Zoom and technologies. I can go back and listen to all those conversations that I didn't take good notes, but.
What would you prefer from us then? Would you prefer to like rework this and come back again and maybe schedule a part or hearing or vote on that? Or would you like to try to do that now?
I I think at this point, I would like you guys to just give me some items that you're really interested in. And then I'll try to work those into what we have and then I'll bring it back. I think that'd be most efficient use for us.
One thought that we didn't play with much was the conditional use. Now, if I'm understanding your proposal, you've made it conditional, even though you suggested elsewhere that you didn't like it very much. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay. Allowed an agricultural condition or? No, I'm reading this. I'm also hearing.
Let me say like I'm like sixty, seventy percent for just being allowed, but then I also have, I also understand like the conditional use that gives the neighbors an opportunity to voice their concerns. I mean, if it truly is outside of the character of of a neighborhood, then, you know, that should be known. And and sometimes we only hear that when the public comes and it's an opportunity to talk about it. You know, the the literature that I've read, it's all it's like make it as easy as possible, remove all the hoops. But for the most part, they're talking about municipalities and this is a little bit different because we are out in the rural areas. So that's where it's like I'm I'm not, it doesn't give me super bad heartburn, you know, just probably like one tons and I'm good with it.
Where are we on the conditional? I'm I'm okay with it being conditional. I kind of like. Okay, that's the direction for it. Another specific thing was I felt like the definitions that we were before. And it's it's hard to say it in words, but I felt like your definition of principal dwelling largely just repeated the words. It didn't give me anything that I can walk onto a property and say, oh, that's a principal dwelling. So maybe think about how we define those two terms. Think about what you see and say, oh, that's the principal dwelling. Is there a way to write that down rather than just saying principal dwellings are principal dwellings?
Well, and some of those, like dwelling has its own definition, principal building or structure has its own definition. And so it's like, there's more to this definition than, you know, the the sentence that we have. But I think that we could add some more to like paint the picture a little bit better.
And then that all goes to my general notion. Let's just try to make this do what we want it to do rather than being open seats comp building for those. That's that's the theme that runs through all of this in my mind, and I and I like the conditional and I certainly agree with that. Sure, it's your property. You should build, you should want you with it. But if that were true across the board, we wouldn't have something at all. So were there other specific things that you'd like to convey to?
So speaking of the definition, what I envision, also what I should have thought, that it could be a basement, it could be a dwelling over the garage. It doesn't have to be separate detached building. Can we build that into the definition?
So we would like to have have it allowed in in the building itself, sorry. The interior. Yeah, we we can build that in, yes.
That's really what most of it is. Very few places. Maybe by.
Most of the time in the county, we see like separate buildings. But that doesn't mean, I think I you have had people, well, if not necessarily an accessory, we've had people where they've wanted to build a home that has basically two residents in in it.
But if you do the size limitation, and you still say whatever accessory it is, it's not more than problem.
Right, we would, we would have to, yeah, do the percentage or some way to like say,
Yeah.
Okay, this is how big it can be within the home. And we would also have to deal with like the septic issue and make sure it's like, if you're going to do this, you have to prove to us that it's going to meet different standards and regulations and those types of things. So, yeah. But, yeah, we can do that. I know I've got two of you that want to look.
I don't care if there's the share of law or not.
Okay.
Me and Elsie, I'll say it.
Well, it has less impact on the neighbors if you're within the same building. Didn't we have a poll that commented from somebody, I can't remove us and said, well, you know, I wanted my thirty five acres to be simpler. And now my neighbor has two houses there and doesn't feel like thirty five acres anymore. So but but if they're just building something inside their existing house, that wouldn't have the impact on neighbors. As long as it's septic.
And they might complain about the traffic for extra power.
I don't think that hill was just the end of it.
Yeah, but it seems to me like.
Mr. Harris, do you want to weigh in on this at this point?
No, nothing.
On that septic thing, the other thing that occurred to me as I read too, this is when the subdivision comes to us. We're required to submit to DEQ for their standard water which for suitability study. That study is based on what's going on. So there should be some catch in here that would see if that's corrupted in any way. I now have two dogs. Yes, it would rarely ever happen, but just to refer to the system, you approve that subdivision with an assumption of what.
Yeah, it'd be interesting. Yeah. I'm curious to how many bedrooms per lot they build it for, you know what I mean?
There is a standard, but they're they are currently, DEQ is currently playing with asking us consultants to look at fours and fives. I don't know if we've we in Albany County have ever gotten on that first, I mean, nation of DEQ. But anyway, just that would fit with, I would think with per quarter ratio is that let's let's not lose track of potentially the rest of the quality.
Yeah. I mean, I could check with DEQ and see what they say if I can get a get an answer to it or whatever. Well, I can get a hold of people there. They're pretty good about getting back to me. I just don't know what they're telling me.
But algebraically, they can tell you built it there.
Right.
Okay, other thoughts on that? Do you feel like you've got enough to?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll I'll get back at her and raise her back, so.
I feel like we're converging on it.
Well, I think so too. Yeah, I think we're making progress.
I appreciate your reference. Okay, next topic. The fencing, Mr. Harris is going to tell us about the new law fencing. I listened to some of those here.
Yeah.
Go for it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so initially, it was kind of a weird one. My colleague Jennifer and I, we read the legislative page one day for this bill. It said that it failed second reading in the center. So we thought we were done with it, but it didn't. So I don't know what happened. That was the website or what? So basically, this was always a requirement for subdividers to install perimeter fencing on any lands upon which livestock can be legally run at large. It was just buried over in the agricultural title of statutes and the, you know, and the county act no involvement. Now it is an explicit requirement for the county to make sure that we see plans for the construction of this perimeter fence from the sub divider. You may ask, what, you know, what are lands which upon which livestock can legally be run at large? You know?
Forest, VLM.
I would, yeah, I would hate to be the judge that that has to do that case because it's under Wyoming law. You as a property owner have the the duty to fence out any unwanted livestock. There's no duty for livestock owners to fence in their livestock. So really, it is any land that, I guess, you know, either by contract or maybe local zoning ordinance, you can have livestock. And then if you can have them, they can legally be run at large. Or pretty much any federal land, yeah, where they, you know, lease out for grazing. So it'll basically be any, any and every subdivision in Albany County, I guess, unless maybe they're bordering the city. Or if they're bordering, yeah. Or a state right or a state highway, because you have to fence out. That's the only fencing requirement is that landowners have to fence in their cattle from getting onto state highways. So there will pretty much always be perimeter fence. This statute, as Mr. Gurge included, thank you, Mr. Gurge, for doing that. That was a good idea. Well, it'll be effective, oh, July first, twenty twenty three, so whether we have it in our regulations or not, we're going to have to start enforcing it come July first, twenty twenty three. Now, I guess the the initial thought I had and and maybe something this commission wanted to consider was that, you know, the one thing I always see from DEQ, or sorry, Game and Fish during their subdivision, we use wildlife.
And that doesn't meet their requirements.
No, well, I see, I couldn't, and I didn't do the deep, deep dive, but I didn't see any explicit requirements like any regulatory kind of, you know, binary type standards for wildlife fencing from Game and Fish.
No, there is, there is a page on their website, and I had it, but now I don't have it anymore, so.
I just found a few publications that these are the things you can do.
Yeah, no, they they have criteria.
Okay.
And they're not the same as what's in section nine seven there.
Right, so.
It's easy. Why not?
Yeah, Teton County did pretty explicit standards for any sort of fencing where it has to be, you know, round wooden top post. And then, you know, I think like two or three strands of barbed wire and then smooth wire on the bottom for wrong horn and anything else. And then, yeah, with the big, big wood. Yeah, on top for the larger umbulates. So I thought that, you know, maybe this might be a good opportunity to address that because, I mean, either way, we're going to have to deal with this.
The way it's written, it says, you will require three strand barbed wire fence. Full stop. Are we allowed to tinker with their standard?
Yeah. So.
State standard and state legislature.
So there, Teton County is already required for fences within incorporated portions, you know, theirs. And especially with the subdivision statutes, there is that, you know, the county can enact more stringent requirements. This is now a subdivision required. So we can, we can provide more exacting standards. And also, if you look at them, which I included in that kind of like perimeter fences shall be a lawful fence. There's that all other fences made and constructed of boards, rails, poles, blah, 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 which upon evidence is declared to be as strong and well calculated to protect enclosures and is as effective for resisting breaching stock as then described above. So they give you three very specific fences and then also just say.
Whatever.
Yeah.
So is your suggestion that Albany County can develop its own standards with respect to wildlife?
I would say as long as it is declared to be as strong and well calculated to protect enclosures and is as effective for resisting breaching stock.
Declared by who?
Right. I, yeah, I mean.
That's saying wildlife friendly for sure.
Wildlife friendly is probably just off the grid criteria.
Well, can I read you what they read? Okay, so I'm on the Game and Fish website right now. And it says, a standard three or four wire wildlife friendly fence that is meant to contain livestock, but also allow passage by most wildlife will have these parts. Upwire no higher than forty two inches so wildlife can jump over. Smooth bottom wire set sixteen inches off the ground so wildlife can go under. And one to two evenly spaced wires in between the top and bottom wires. And they're pretty explicit. Resultantly, it's been tested on livestock.
And I, yeah, I know that, I mean, I'm sure, well, I don't want to be too presumptive, but I assume that Game and Fish probably isn't stoked about this having any explicit requirement for subdivisions because we always see as part of their review the livestock friendly fencing, which it seems like oftentimes applicants will voluntarily do that to not receive a negative review from Game and Fish. But now I think now that they have placed this in Article Three of our, of the county subdivision statutes, this is now within our parameters. And I would also be happy to share what Teton County has now done because there's just more exacting of that.
Okay, well, there's more to this. Apparently, Game and Fish has a wildlife friendly fencing guide.
Oh, okay, so that's what I found. And that talks about like, you know, knock down fences for like the big elk migrations and everything else, but yeah, I think that.
So is is your recommendation that Albany County? So is is your recommendation that Albany County do those, develop a specific standard?
My recommendation was that it be considered by the commission whether we, whether it might be prudent to, given what we know about Game and Fish's continual reviews of subdivision applications.
Mr. Platt, Mary member, if you brought it up, we added it as a condition for a group of it's a tower constructed out on Larry Herbert. Remember that? I don't. But anyways, I think we added it as a condition. The applicant was there and said, sure, sure, sure. So we have, I think, some track record of saying, yeah, we would like to add a wildlife friendly fence for what it's worth. If I was the barbed wire salesman, I'd say that's to that, that isn't, doesn't meet the criteria. A cow would push over a barbless fence easier than a barbless fence, that's the part of the park.
Well, there's still the, I mean, in everything I've seen, there's still two or three bars in the middle.
The bottom wires.
So you need smooth on top of it, so they can go under an hour without.
Yeah, I've seen cows just run through the fence before.
The only thing I would say is that we really want to think about not just the bottom, but also the top. So we might want to consider what Teton and why they came up with a solid top. Because I myself found an elk that jumped over the fence and got tangled in the top wire and died horribly. So if we can do that, since that'll be great.
Yeah, and I mean, it was just, I just wanted to kind of be a little more proactive knowing, you know, what we usually see from Game and Fish. Since we're gonna have to be enforcing this irregardless come July 1st, that, you know, we can take a little bit of time to that.
This would be in addition to our subdivision. So the thought is that you, you guys would bring something to us on our next meeting.
Well, I wanted to get an idea of if that was even something that was wanted to be considered.
I hear you have great sympathy for that, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Hanning, I'm, you're just over my lip here, so am I speaking for you as well?
Yeah, I I think it's a wonderful opportunity to add in wildlife fencing requirements. And it seems pretty consistent with the Albany County Comprehensive Plan, you know, that we want to respect wildlife. And it's a part of our quality of life in our county. So I I don't think it would be inconsistent at all to require that kind of fencing. I think that's a great idea.
So, yeah, I can sit down right now and share with everyone, I guess, what Teton County has done. Perhaps Commissioner Corcoran, if you could share with, I guess, what you found from DEQ, which I was unable to, or sorry, Game and Fish.
Yeah, well, they. All I did was Google wildlife friendly fencing in Wyoming.
I have the, I have the guide, so I found the guide, but it didn't really give like a explicit.
It says, download our guide, which.
Yeah, it's 52. Yeah, and I I think it was more just like, these are a bunch of options that you could do, but it wasn't like as explicit. I don't know, it wasn't quite like regulatory type standards.
Yeah.
I would think most people would want to do this. Nobody wants to, you know, run their fences and find a bunch of animals. Yeah, it's awesome. And nobody would want to do that.
I mean, it will be costly for subdivisions, but.
We did the perimeter fences after David and Joe.
Yeah, I still see four branches being built, and I don't know why.
Yeah.
It seemed to be fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, of course, tough to get through.
Maybe it's just not well known, or maybe some.
I mean, we have lives of moving fencing on a silly, you know, fencing. Do a lot of, you know, the public engagement, changing the bottom wire, so might as well stop right.
I think that all of them are children's shares.
The timing on this, you think we will develop something here on spot, or we will now? Okay, so let's, let's feed information to the chairs over the next month. Seems like they're gonna have a subdivision coming in that window we can first.
Yeah, I guess, Commissioner Corcoran, maybe if you want to talk more about that guide, because it, or, yeah. At a separate time.
Yeah, I mean, I just looked, seen it for the first time.
Okay.
I can take a look at it. What option would be the most appropriate?
Yeah, because I, you know, from when I read it through the guide, we would still have to pick definite standards out of it. It was more just like, these are things that you can do.
I don't. Could we not just, could we not just say, no, you have to build something that meets Game and Fish standards? Presumably, they're all.
So I didn't, yeah, I didn't see anything from Game and Fish that are definite enough standards that we could do that.
Power with the guide or something.
I can go for the guide. I'll go for the guide and make a recommendation.
All right, let's, let's see if we can wrap that to the point of a decision, I think. I mean, there's gonna be some pushback in terms of, I wasn't planning on building a fence at all. Well, state statute says you're gonna build a fence, and we have to see your plans, and we have to see your plans for it. So we can't get too carried away, and we want to see that the, but the real fence is blah, 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 so we would have the minimum that's acceptable to us. Cost.
I'm surprised the legislature didn't require wildlife fencing.
It's one branch is not talking to the other, so different communities.
Okay, further thoughts on that, Mr. Girdge?
Yeah, just, just some interesting tidbits that the county planners across the state were not on paper of this change. Because obviously now we have to try to deal with it, so. But there's nothing you can do about it. I think that, yeah, it'll be interesting when we start applying this and people have to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on that scene. See what the legislature does after that, but just, I don't know.
Contact their legislature.
Yeah, I I didn't get too much into the the discussions, but we've got kind of an email chain that and there are some, some of the planners were not happy with this at all, but what we've got to do is.
Or the county attorney is also.
Yeah. Even though like Matt says, it's always been in the regulations, but it was like, we didn't have to enforce it now. It's like putting it into a section where we have to do it, so.
Okay, that's all we have to say on that one. The next item will go quickly as well. I think it's pretty well circumscribed. Can you put one side down, the other? Urban Systems Advisory Committee Major Street Plan, Mr. Girdge?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Fishers. So what you have before you, there's, there's two items to this. First, there's the Urban Systems Project Priority List, the 2023 list that was approved by USAC. I don't think I've ever brought this to the Planning and Zoning Commission before, the Board of County Commissioners, but Derek took it to the city, so I guess we'll do the same. So, because this is really just their list, but we'll bring it to you guys. If you, if you approve, then we can move it on, move this on to the Board of County Commissioners. The second thing is the Major Street Plan. So the USAC is over, they're actually over two different plan, two different plans. The Functional Classification Plan, which that is a plan to show all of the roads that are currently built and how they're functioning, so are they functioning like a collector, an arterial, or a local? And then the other one is the Major Street Plan, and this is more of a 20-year type document. And this is used for funding. You know, USAC Board actually gets a couple hundred thousand dollars a year put into their coffers to work on a project. That's kind of where this priority list comes from. The first priority on there, that's what we're saving money to do. To then, you know, put that into play, but, but the plan itself, in order to use funding, you have to have this plan to do it. And so at this recent meeting of the USAC Board, they did the following. First, they removed those streets map from the intersection of 45th Street and Crow Drive to the end, east end of Willett Drive and the north end of Older Drive. And then they also extended Eka Drive to the most northerly proposed collector as shown on the Major Street Plan. So if you look at the plot, everything, those, those proposed roads in an aqua protection area, those were what got removed. And then Eka Drive is that northeast corner. They just drove that, that collector, that was a collector, I can't remember. That, yeah, it's a proposed collector all the way to the top of the northernmost collector. So those are the the changes there. So if you are amenable to what they did, we just ask for a motion to recommend this to the Board of County Commissioners, and then we'll move it on to them and then they'll approve it. And then actually, the chairman will sign the map and Board of County Commissioners, the chair will sign the map. And I believe YDOT signs it and City Plan. Yeah, it's a bunch of books on it, so.
I think we were all surprised to know that we were even part of that. Commissioner Hanning represented us at that meeting. You want to add anything to what Mr. Girdge shared with us there?
No, that was all an accurate description of the changes. The, the, the only thing I didn't know, I didn't know what project was gonna move up into the fourth slot, so that, that's a new revelation for me. You probably always have to have four things on the list, so whatever was number five somewhere moved up to four when we took out the 45th Street extension being one of the projects.
Yeah, I think there was the five before, wasn't there? I thought there was five priorities, and so, so they just removed the one and then, yeah, I can't remember if it was after it or before it or whatever, but. Yeah, so nothing else changed on it. The order didn't necessarily change. We just removed that 45th Street.
So does anyone have questions on what this plan with which we're peripherally involved?
I just absolutely support things. Are they actually going to happen on a timeline? Do you have a timeline?
Yeah, so probably, well, so the the number one priority, it, I mean, I, I think probably within the next couple of years, there's potential that this could happen. I don't know for sure. The costs on here are, as it says, $2,016. So I think, I think using the money that we have, we, we cover that cost, but we don't know what the additional cost would be. But that one is, is forthcoming, probably in the next two or three years, I'd imagine, maybe quicker than that. The rest of them, who knows? I mean, this project has been on here for five, six years as a number one. I, I don't know. Maybe it's not that long, but it's. Yes.
2016.
Yes, yeah, 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 so it's been on there since, yeah, for sure. Yep, yep, so, yeah, that, it takes so long to collect the money for this just because it's super expensive to build roads. Now, that being said, like, the city and the county could pitch in money and get it going quicker if they want. There's stuff against that, but. And because we got plenty of money at the county, is that what I'm hearing? No, but like, but like, yeah, so we could use, use money to do those things. Obviously, the bill may have one involved in the city and we wouldn't want to.
As it's been explained to me over the years, you're number three. The difference between never and number three is real small.
Yeah, in these priorities, things pop on, they pop off, but they're always getting reprioritized. It depends on who's, you know, who's got something on their agenda or whatever. I mean, they, they, they come and they, and they lobby for what they want and.
But there is a lot of development going on like earlier right now, so.
Yeah, no, this makes a whole lot of sense, the number one priority does, so, yeah, I mean, it will, it, one, it'll open up, you know, traffic, you know, now you take some of that traffic from the high school in other directions. And then two, it's, it will make that land much more desirable to develop, which is near the city and get services in, you know, logical growth, obviously can happen. Once this is built, I think it'll be much more likely to develop, so.
I do have another question. Okay. The pipe that is going in like.
The, the water pipe?
Yeah.
Um, I don't, I think that's part of the project to get water to the, what is that place called? Yeah, they got a name for it, the municipal or.
Municipal city, whatever.
Yeah, anyways, it's the new, new, new municipal city, whatever, building up on.
Okay.
Today seven or whatever, year 30, yeah, the old YOTX. So I think that's part of that project to get water to there and then that other area as well. But the specifics, I don't know.
Is it going for any, does it pull up at all or?
No, I don't think so. I think they're just looping their, their existing system, from what I understand. I don't, yeah.
Okay, are there other questions on the urban systems?
Yeah, I'd comment, please do. It is fortuitous that more are served in my place because I would have voted against approval of 45th Street. 30th and Grand Avenue intersection is going to become a problem. As more of these clearing grows, there's no other place to put another street to help that problem except for where it was going to go. So, yeah, that's just my comment. Yeah, go ahead.
I guess the one thing I would add is like, just because it's not on this map, doesn't mean it's not gonna be built.
And I said, I.
You just can't get, can't, you can't get funding for that.
Yeah, I understand that is to do that.
Yeah, okay, thank you, thank you for that comment. I mean, it is that as the city grows north, those arterials running east, west will become major thoroughfare. So one, eventually we'll have easy access across the 27. So if your goal is to get from Indian Hills to Walmart, you'll have to earn under that plan. So what's before us is whether to approve at the county level the two things, the Major Street Plan and the Priority List. Is there a motion?
I move.
Both of those sides. Seconded in the discussion, if you'd like to convince us otherwise.
No, I don't think you can miss anyone. I hope we, we won't get to miss anyone here.
And let's take a vote on that. Mr. Hanning?
Oh, I.
Mr. Platt? I voted no for the recent last night's debate. Fair enough, Mr. Carter?
I.
Mr. David?
I.
Chair votes aye, the motion passes. Thank you. Okay, the next items on the agenda are fairly wide ranging. Should we take a short break?
Yes.
Okay, let's do that. Five minutes. Come back here at six fifty.
Change in the standard recommendations would be explicitly said, thank you very much. Hold that thought. So that was the spirit in which Sir Gurch was asked to just pack a dump truck up and give us the whole yard. That is what you want, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah, I mean, it's easy to say, wow, I didn't know what I was gonna get.
But, but, and then so then we're kind of in this, I just take a bite out of a watermelon situation. There's so much there. So it's all wide open, and of course, the cap has not been approved. It's scheduled for, for public hearing toward the board on the fifth. So they may monkey with it if they make substantive changes, look back at us, we'll go through the whole thing again. But we are, as of February, we corrected the deficiency the court found in the previous statute with respect to how we change the boundary. So we can change the boundary right now. If we want to, I think we'll want to wait till the cap's done, do them officially. But anyway, we're not getting off our leash to be talking about certain aspects of what the regulations look like. And I think it's only fair for us to start tuning those up for the discussion that's going to take place over the next six months anyway. So any aspect of this that anybody has any concerns about, let's flag them at the, I think we may have been carving out workstations or something. To me, it seemed like in all that pile of comments, there's a, a whole lot of them that are the nature of the aquifer, whether it's confined, whether there's actually been any contamination at all, how the subdivisions work. I think we've, my thing, just to be talking, we've kicked those around pretty thoroughly. And so I'm not feeling any need to go back and rehash any of those things. They can be in the backboard minds as we go forward, as we do some regulation. And if anybody feels differently, we can sure go back and add any, any little nod that we saw. The big items that I, I felt like we needed to, to look carefully at as a move forward regulation. One was the boundary. And we had a number of comments on boundaries. First, we have a, a recommended boundary from StanTech in the cap. Kind of tentatively given that an okay by a grace cap. Then there's the whole issue of septic tank regulation. How that proceeds. You should remember, of course, in capital element, there's been quite a bit of concern about the cost of these enhanced systems, whether we back up the train and try to take the elements out, whether we pick them up as the replaced. So I'm thinking there's a whole lot of regulation that we're wanting to think of with respect to the septic systems. And then a third piece would be the SSI is what they're asking people to do. So again, sing out, this is a skill session here, if you feel differently. For the boundary, I had asked David and Jerry to put together some maps for us to look at. So if it's unacceptable to you guys, I'd proceed with, let's, let's pluck out the piece that's the boundary. Just look at some of the issues and how we might want to go forward with this.
So that's very fine, maybe it's nice to say no, it's not what they have.
Okay, no, it's a, it's, it's obviously controversial. So I guess to start that, maybe Mr. Gurch. First, remind us where we are right now.
We're in the new commission, sure.
Wonderful.
We're in Wyoming, last I looked, but I've seen two of everything, so.
Sandtech still owes us a set of recommended regulations, is that right?
They've provided us some recommended regulations. But I think they need to be tuned up a little bit before.
Last thing we saw was a markup of some older regulations.
Right.
Sure, we keep moving the target on them. But I have not seen a markup of the February 23 regs, that's, that would be.
Correct.
What they will give us.
We can ask them for that. They've got their regulations, the request in like kind of a memo form with, with what they're asking for. They're not embedded in the regulations. But we will have, we will get that. If, if they don't give it to us, then.
Or you will prepare that.
Yeah, I, I've actually started, I may have beat down with it, so. But I, there's a few of the things that were in what they proposed that were, like, the references were outdated and some of that stuff, so.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, we need, somewhere we need an explicit.
Yes, and you will have that.
Okay, yeah, so just, just, so we'll see this week before. Okay, so the boundary. And we haven't really talked a lot about the boundary, but we've talked a lot about the geology and so forth. So let me just remind you, and this came up, well, one other planetary thought. I talked to Chris Moody with city planning, and they, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Gurch. They're kind of on hold. And their planning staff is going to work with StanTech and do something similar in terms of, here's a recommendation. The cap hasn't been approved, the city, oh, right. But when I talked to Chris, I suggested that something like the boundary is mostly a county issue, because most of the boundaries in the county, the septics are all exclusively a county issue because the city doesn't allow septics. And the SSI's are more on their side of it because of the 60 and 58 of them in the city. So my thinking was, maybe we let them take the first crack at that. Now, we aren't obligated to have identical regulations with the city, but I think we're all on board with, let's make it as similar as we can. And that we would give the city kind of special commenting status if they don't like, if they don't think we're adequately protecting the aquifer that supplies the 30 plus thousand cities that we don't, we don't know about. We aren't, like, we were on the cap, we're identical document. But we continue to work through the planning staffs. Check, is that right? Have you had any talk with Mr. T D about how you guys are gonna proceed?
We have not. I mean, we've been focused on the plan most literature.
Okay. So just a quick review of the boundaries, the current what is the western boundary that's, that's a dispute, the north, south, and east boundaries are not. The current western boundary is drawn with a pencil on seven and a half minute plot sheets in 1998 by a local hydrogeologist. As part of the delineation subcommittee that was the first cap. And that has gotten digitized various ways over the years, yet hope you understand, GIS won't be surprised that sometimes it comes out with big long line segments, sometimes they're small, and so there's been this ambiguity, where is the line exactly? But that line is the current western boundary for regulation of the APOC. In 2008, the city revised the cap and the consultant they hired brought in a bunch of new geologic data and also recommended that the city accepted moving it to surveyed lines. So they escaped the issue of how fat is a pencil? Did you use number two or number three pencil? So I think all these map things we should keep in mind, whether it's just a zoning map out in the middle of the county that tells you where the rural residential meets the ag. The map is just an illustration of the survey. If you really wanted to know where the line was, you go look at the survey data on the plan. Which as Mr. Gurch explained, this is how the original zoning was done. So the maps really aren't the word there, the illustration of the word. That sound correct, Mr. Gurch?
Yeah.
Because that's where you really, really get right down to the beats and bounds. All right, so that's what the city then, and they've suggested a western APOC boundary from top to bottom. The only part of it that mattered, of course, was in the city. That's what we could call the 2000 city boundary. In 2021, the county adopted that city boundary. And the court said you did that procedurally incorrectly. So then the county boundary reverted to the 1998 boundary, if you will. Now, we have, StanTech has come forward with two things. One, a line that is intended to approximate the point at which the 75 feet of the tank cover is honored. And a line that would be administrative western boundary of the APOC. So I'm up to four different lines floating around out there. And then we will need to pick one. The recommendation we are getting through the cap would be to go with the, the new geology move to the west, pick up the first surveyed line. Okay. Now, is this piece we're looking at, does it show all four of those? That's a period, you and I've talked about.
Yeah, so let me kind of describe what you're seeing. It's kind of, there's a lot going on here.
Is there a way to raise the screen just like an inch?
It gets built in.
What do you?
It can be raised. We told it to do. Just sit down that way so that people from here would be instructed.
Here over the edge, have it.
Yeah, we have to do this, the whole screen.
I don't know how, and that's expensive.
Yeah.
Maybe further north would be a place to see the, see just the different lines in a little simpler fashion. Is this?
I'm gonna turn off some stuff here real quick.
Yeah, that's okay. I think the layers we want are the, the four lines of the property.
Okay, so if you can see it, there's a blue line here. This blue line is the city's existing boundary. Do you see this little kind of young, not the end, but like seafoam green? I don't know what it is on these screens, but.
White gray, very, very light.
Yeah, so this is our existing boundary. And the red line right here, okay, let me do the black line, the black line. So the existing boundary is based on the 1999 delineation report. And what they determined was 75 feet of satanga through here. The black line is also, this is tanga, or where they, this is with, with what Mark, Stacy and StanTech did. This is where they estimate the 75 feet of satanga line to be. And this red line is what is being proposed as the actual boundary of, the western boundary of the aquifer protection overlay zone in the plan. And what they did to do that is they, they created this line, which was based on well logs, the SSI's that were done, other reports and information they've gathered since 2008. And so that's, that's how they determine this. And then this is just administrative, so they, they followed this black line right here, and then they went to the closest, to the next basically property line.
And they went to the westernmost.
Yeah, they moved west to the next property.
Yeah, they moved west, exactly. So that's kind of what you're seeing, this, this black line dashed right here, this is the city boundary. This is the Laramie Plain subdivision that we're looking at right here. And so I think one of the points that Mr. Hinkley was going to make is like, where there's a lot of density, there's a lot of well logs, a lot of, you know, data to choose from. Not all the data was the greatest, and so those, the stuff that wasn't the best, they threw out, they used the best data to determine where this black line would be, and then they use, they went west of there. So that's, that's kind of what we're looking at. So this is kind of the first area. And then Mr. Hinkley, I guess.
Can you pan this image? Let's go down, for example, keeping all those lines. Yeah, all right, well, just, okay, just looking at that one, that's, that's an interesting image for a couple of reasons. In this case, the black line is to the east of the, it looks to me like a white line. So they've revised the notion for the 75 foot criteria it is and moved it further east. Is that the line's corrected?
Yeah.
Blue is the city's.
So the, the blue is what the city's is in what we had in our regulations until we had to redo it.
Yes, and so, yeah, in this case, and now it's going to be a single line, there's likely a single line and county lines. So the, the suggestion from the cap would be to move the blue line to the east, reducing the size of the APOC. But moving the, what I'm seeing is a white line to the west.
Pretty white.
Increasing the size of the APOC. But to the, to the point Mr. Gurch made just a moment ago. When we get out in these areas of great big lots, there's a kind of a natural correspondence to where, where the lots are bigger, the line is less precise. There's less, there are less data. So here, one could say, well, you're being awfully generous if you think, oh, there I can see this aqua line. If you're taking all that land to the west of the.
I changed it, it's not your eyes.
Okay.
Should you make it green or something like dog green?
I could do whatever you'd like.
Ooh, don't say that.
I will try to do it.
Oh, yeah.
Let's see if this works.
Yeah.
Oh, that's nice. If I call it green. So we're, so the, and here's where some of the objections are showing up, is that there's quite a bit of territory to the west of the black line. It's now within the APOC. Arguably, the life black line truly was the 75 foot criteria, which is what defines the APOC. Logically, then that, that the APOC is grabbing more land than it should. But the point is, in a big lot like this, where we don't have a lot of well data, that black line is much less well known than it was further north there in our plains where we got the little Lego effect. So part of the answer to why are you including this whole big track is it, it reflects the level of, of knowledge that we have of just exactly where that criteria is meant.
But, Mr. Chairman, I ask you. But under the cap, it's still scientifically defensible estimation. Where, where the, the new estimated line is, correct?
Yes, the, I mean, the, the orange line is unimpeachably based on looking at the geology well.
Or well, well, I'd say we don't have white anymore.
Well, the orange one is the one that's being suggested by Sam.
Right, but the black lines were.
The black.
That's, that's their estimate.
The black line is, is where they estimated the 75 foot criteria is based on the science. But, but, plus minus.
Right.
And so we should think of the black line not as where that criteria apply, but where that criteria is estimated to apply. And the rule that was applied to produce the orange line was, let's do the best we can to estimate where that line is. And then move to the next surveyed line to the west.
The blue line is what we have right now?
The blue is what we have right now.
Blue line is what the city has right now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What we have is the green line.
The green line is what we have right now.
The green line is us.
Yeah, the green line is the old estimated 75 foot.
Brand is what we have proposed.
That's right, StanTech is, which we may or may not.
And the black line is Stan, is StanTech's 75 foot line.
An estimation.
Estimation.
Yes, I, I try to.
All the 75 foot line is estimated.
Right.
It's all one of these.
Well, yes, but the boundary lines are not estimated.
Right.
That's, that's an important point to preserve, is that's, those, those, in this case, the blue lines and the orange lines are certain.
Those are red line. Yeah, and, and, you know, in the, in the document itself, StanTech notes that, you know, in, this is inherently not exactly right there. I mean, it's, it's not precise. You know, but it's the best guess.
Right.
And, and even where they didn't have well data, they did use the local geological data to create that line. So there's still, I mean, there's still a method to what they're doing. It's not just like.
Where I will take your comment.
Okay, good.
Right, so. We do not know where the 75 foot, 5 foot layer is exactly.
Correct, right.
With this line on the map, we do know exactly where that line is. That line has real meaning. That was digitized in GIS environment.
This?
So the black line.
Well, the black line is digitized and adjusted, but it's not surveyed.
It's not surveyed, but we do know where it is because it's digitized with coordinates, real world coordinates. So it is surveillable. It has not been surveyed, but surveillable. That's a criteria for a little description.
I don't know if that's true.
Why not?
Because you can, I can draw a line on anywhere on here, and then I, I mean, where, what are you basing, what are you basing that on? This is just a map that's based on.
I'm basing on the conversation with Mark Stacey. So when they digitize that, they digitize that GIS environment, you're referenced with points. Those points have coordinates, real world coordinates associated.
Were they geo-referenced? Were they, were they?
That's what he told me.
Okay, they were not connected to any points that are on the ground. Unless they're connected to survey points on the ground, there's no way you can go out there and survey that line. No way.
That's incorrect.
Okay, not assumption to discussion. We're not going to solve it tonight.
Right.
But that whole discussion is part of the reason.
If you stipulate though, that in fact that line has to define and is definable in real world terms. That's, that's important because that, that is what we're making these governance decisions off of. That, we're using that line to extend the survey line to the west. And also in our present regulation, it reads where the boundary of the APOC divides a lot, requirements of this regulation shall apply only to the portion of the lot that's located with the APOC. That means we have to know where that line is.
No, we're changing that regulation.
No, but that's, I'm just saying that's the existing regulation.
That's right, but that's.
So I, I'm using it to state shape my client, this line has, has real governance meaning.
What you can identify is a flaw in the existing regulation.
We, we need to know where that line is regardless.
How, how do you find where this line is on the ground? That's what I want to know. Because what we're looking at right now is a pitcher from like 10,000 feet in the air. The lines are based on, you know, what BLM did to the best of their ability and where they think corner lines are, you know, on a map. You know, nothing was done on the ground to survey those things.
Right.
And so all of our ownership data is based on a corner that is done, you know, to the best of their ability, but not on the ground. And so how do you take a line that's on all these other lines that are not accurate to, you know, precisely to the ground and then say that this is where it's at? I guess I just don't know what the process is to get to that point, so.
With GPS technology, satellites orbiting Earth, I can go to any point, any coordinate on that line that you give me, and I can put a flag. Is that?
But the line was created just on a computer. There was, there was not reference to anything, any monument on the ground. That's what I'm saying.
The best, the best estimate estimate of the satanga 75 feet. He's saying this is well.
Different issue.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess I can argue with you. I'm not the expert in the GIS field. I know that there has been letters from, I've got a letter in my office from the, the, you know, Wyoming Survey Association or whatever, whoever licenses those. They specifically say GIS data is not survey data and cannot be used for such. And I can provide that letter to this board if you'd like to see. But again, I'm not the expert and I can't argue other than what I've said, so.
And if there is language that we need to add to our regulations as they move forward, that clarifies, by all means, we should do that. But the takeaway from this little discussion is the value of surveyed lines. Which I think we all agree on that, yes. That we want to have, do we or do we not want to have APOC boundary that is surveyed lines?
Surveyable.
Serve, well, that's a question. What's our instructions to StanTech were? Give us an APOC boundary that has been surveyed. That's what they gave. Now, do we want to change that or not? Those lines are inherently surveyable, they're surveyed. So surveyed lines, well.
So can I give you an example of what, what I'm talking about? Okay, so if you look at these lines that have been created by the assessor's office, when we did that subdivision down South, I think it was Vista, I don't know if anybody was up here then, but we did one that was called Vista Grande. So this is, this is the data that we had. We had, it was like, the data from the assessor's office said that this, the acreage of that area was 100 and some odd acres. Well, when we, when the survey came back, they actually had 20 more acres in that survey. Because they are not accurate, you know? What is drawn here is not accurate. It's done based on, you know, all of the geography, round earth, you know, coordinates and all that stuff. It's just not accurate what we're seeing here. It's, it's a best guess. But, you know, when, when someone goes to court and says, hey, my property line is right here, somebody doesn't show up with a GIS map. They show up with a survey that's been stamped by someone that is professional and has followed the procedures that that professional has to follow.
And really the meats and baps description, whatever state that controls. Because, yeah, I mean, we are relying on the assessors. You know, who have gotten all this up, and I mean, that's for tax assessment purposes. Red difference, different purpose than, than I guess what we have right now.
Well.
Can we, can?
So go ahead. You go ahead.
Can, can you scroll the map up a little bit? Let's look at the, at the area that we actually do know exactly well what things are. Do you, is the black line in that section of Grand Avenue, is that? So let's scroll up a little more, just focus. Here is the black line going over Grand Avenue. Right? Is that, can you survey that? Can you?
Not from this.
Can you walk, can you walk that line on Grand Avenue?
Not necessarily, no, you would, I mean, I mean, if you look at, I mean, not even just Grand, but if you look at some of these other roads, you can see how that this road is actually crossing over this line because the line is not on this property, right? I mean, it's, it actually shifts. Some of these things shift because you've got layer upon layer upon layer. The first layer is a pitcher, the second layer is like some of this ownership stuff. And then you've got these other layers of lines, and, and they're all just drawn on there. I can draw a line on any here, on this or whatever, but like.
This is precisely my point. This is why a drawn line.
I mean, yeah, I'm, I'm done. I, I don't know what else to say, I guess.
So looking at this kind of stuff is precisely my point. We have to know exactly where that line is. And you can describe a line by two points. You could do, you can describe a line by meats and balance methods. You could also give two coordinates, two coordinates in real world describe a line. And if you're working in a geo reference GIS environment, you can pick out points with real world coordinates on them. And that's why, that's how that line is right now, again, based on my conversation with Mark Stacey. If I understood them correctly, they've got a file saying where that line is. That you could take to a surveyor, and that surveyor in turn, wow, okay, that line on Grand Four.
So, okay, I just.
And the reason it matters is because we're, we're making governance decisions off this line. We're saying which parcels either in or out.
You know, I.
If a parcel owner wants to know, how can you show that my parcels actually inside outside APOC won't prove? We've got to refer to that body, I believe.
And that's why we're using the, the actual lines that are surveyed, and we know they are. And if we describe the, the property boundaries, you know, in, in the regulations, say that we are going by survey property boundaries. Then, then we can, we can go out there, we can get on the ground, we can, we can see the pin, we can make the lines, and we know exactly where it is.
The squiggly line inside the APOC is because of the black line. The black line determines whether to include that parcel or not.
Approximately.
Correct.
And now look at the, I'll give you the geology of that. I'll tell you right now, that black line's in the wrong place. There's no way at all that the geology has those kinks in it.
That's right.
So what we're, what we're saying is, we're going to adopt the, what looks like an orange line to be because it is west of that black.
Because it is west of that black line. Wherever that black line is. In the picture in front of us now, the black line could be.
Because the black lines are property.
Right, but that black line could be a hundred feet either way and they've still been.
And this illustration shows why we got a problem. Because illustrations can be shifted one way or another.
Well, it doesn't matter, come with the same decision. A matter of a shift the black line or not. Well, that's the power of the, of the idea of moving to the west to the left.
And I, I think that Mr. Platt is also getting to a good point is that, I mean, the entire basis for the delineation is still the 75 feet.
That's right.
Um, so if you're capturing too much beyond what that estimation is to the best of our, I mean, of scientific abilities, given the correct data. That in some situations could give rise to arbitrary and capricious claims.
Okay, so. My, my solution to that. Would be as follows. We, we have a line. That has been created in a systematic, scientifically justified, well, way. Now. It was not within the capabilities of our contract with Stan Tech. To find the 75 feet criteria at every spot. And that's, it's never right. You know, the exchange I had with, with Mr. David. Uh, did, did you, David, did you find that diagram from the tumbleweed? S S I?
Uh, yes. Actually, I think I just found it now. That's a long period.
It's, it's quite instructive.
Let me see strike card.
So, so two things. One is. We don't know, we can't know exactly where the 75 criteria are.
Which tumbleweed is across from that really black out till. I mean.
But in everything, in much of the boundary, I would say most of the boundary. Say it doesn't matter, it's, it's too cavalier, but absent. It's, the reason to nail it down precise.
So I don't go with the science or we don't go with the science.
No, no, uh, uh, we don't need to fight a whole lot of battles that aren't posed. If, if most of the boundary is through agricultural land that's likely state agricultural, for our life. So for us to, us the county to go to the expense to figure out exactly where that line is. Is, is, it's just. There's no point in doing that. So, so where someone does have a problem with that line, as it's been presented to us by Stan Tech. My thought is let us find an easy way for someone to challenge whether their piece of ground is or is not. Within the A P O Z, under the 75 foot criteria. That will quickly distill this whole discussion down to. I don't know, five, six, eight properties. Then we can have the detailed discussion of that and someone come, come in and, and, and look at it with much more care. Right, the point of this map, we need to be able to read the numbers. Which, I don't know, can you guys read the numbers? Okay, so what you're looking at here is a, this is a map that was developed by Robert Starkey. As part of a S S I that he did for the tumbleweed re activation totally guessing. Each one of the points represents a well log from which he proposed to extract the top of the Casper. And that sounds like measuring the height from this table and writing it down. Well, pointing the illustration, why I asked you, for that force, just look at those numbers. They're all over the place. There, there's no way that the actual top of the Casper is 55 in one spot, 116 in the lot next door to it, 87 the lot, the next door to that. 113 off there to the left. Uh, and then only 46 down there below. So. To determine where this 75 feet criteria lies. Back in 1988, site was sufficiently protected that would cast problem for. Is no small feat. And even with all these well data, you're still left with, I wonder where that really is. Which is why the, the, the line that was drawn by Mr. Farber back in 1988, which is represented by the shading to the right. Is in a different place than was drawn by Mark Stacy. Based on similar data and whatever else he defined.
So my question is.
So we don't know where the 75 feet is.
So my question is, have we used modern techniques such as Krigging? To come up with, uh, is no law. Well, because Krigging has been around and used by the oil companies. And Dr. Starkey probably knows more about it than me, but Krigging is a statistical method. That gives you the probability of something happening here or not here. And that is a solid, no one can argue with anything like that.
But Krigging is based on discrete data points that you do know. We don't have, we don't have those.
Every single one of these, you.
Those are not named points.
You have that. We can do Krigging using all of our data and along the aquifer within the boundaries that matter to us. Use Krigging to determine where the line is.
But, but in, in, in. Krigging comes out of ore reserve terminations. That's where the guys that invented Krigging came from. And they had assays of specific points and the question was, how are those ore concentrations distributed spatially between the points? You don't have discrete points. Look at those numbers. Those are, those are wrong numbers. See by looking at them, some of them are.
Right, I guess.
Okay, I'm sorry. We're, we're way afield.
Well, I, I was just going to add to the, the discussion here. Um, I mean, as you can see, like these points are right in the middle of each of the lots. Which it probably doesn't make huge difference on this close of lots, but like when you get out, the way that, that, the. State Engineers Office used to do it, it was, they just took the quarter core and they piled all of the wells right in the middle of it. So every well was one point in the middle of it. So it wasn't actually on the point, you know? And so, you know, obviously the numbers, you know, are probably not super accurate. And then also the locations aren't also super accurate. So we've got those two factors that make it difficult, but we do the best we can. And I think they, you know.
Have anybody, has anybody used Krigging to try and spread the line?
I will tell you, never heard of it.
Okay, so, so this is, this is, this is.
The Stan Engineering explains how they did it. And I.
I will take another look at this.
And I don't think it's appropriate to Krig this because you don't have the data to support them. I mean, it's a nice fancy statistical way to make things work, which you got to have data.
Oil companies. Companies that do hydraulic fracturing, Bruno Planet, do Krigging all the time. It's a common statistical tool when you don't have data in every point. To estimate what the rest of, of the lock formation looks like. It can be that. Whether these data are accurate or not, I, I have no idea. But there's absolutely, absolutely, I don't see any reason why they would be wrong. You can have 140 feet one place and then it knows the, I mean, I see no problem with these being good numbers. But I don't know that we've used the right statistical tools to estimate the line.
These, these are not good numbers. And Mr. Starkey himself did numbers that represent this as good numbers. He did this as an experiment to see if he could just throw all the data up there and, and, and then contour it nicely. What he ended up doing was throwing this away. Went back, picked three discrete wells that he felt he had a sufficiently quality log. They were real numbers. And that's how he did his work.
That's, that's a different story.
And so my point is that we don't have, it isn't as simple as getting out your. So anytime we look at the 75 feet lines, those are inherently. Doesn't. So the suggestion would be that if someone doesn't like the fact they're in A P O Z. They could come forward with it. They could use Krigging and they could use whatever statistical technique they want to. They could drill a bunch of wells. Whatever they felt was, they've. Whatever was appropriate to nail down. Which part of their parcel they thought should be removed in A P O Z. And they would provide us the surveyed line to define that. That is how you would meet all of our criteria. Watch, survey the line. Not a G I S line, but a surveyed line with all of the stamps and things applied to it. And it would come with a report that would say, and here's why I think the criteria are bad on this one. Some cases that would be dead simple. Some cases it would be quite complicated. I, but my suggestion is that we provided our regulations a, a way to remove a specific parcel from the A P O Z. By looking much more carefully at the available data. Because what's our alternative? To, to go back to Stan Tech, pay them a pile of money to revise the line? To apply Krigging or any statistical method that you. Be interested.
I'm shocked. Shocked that in all the years, we've been talking about the Casper Aquifer Boundary. Nobody came up with the idea of doing Krigging on it. I'm shocked. All you need is the well depth and estimates of the, of the, uh, satanic layer for Watson wells. That's all you need. And anyone Krigging on it, we have a probability surface. Of where the line, the 75 feet line. Not, any geologist student at the University of Wyoming, any senior can do that analysis. That's what they teach them to do. So.
You gotta have.
I mean, I mean, I'm not saying if, if there is, if the data is not there. So that's a different story, but if there is any type of data. If Watson well, that dug everywhere in this area, nearly, I think so. Has a record of where they changed the, the drill bit to go to, uh.
The third, the 55 and the 116, that is a geometric impossible. That's, that's just a fact. I think the world was put together in a semi regular way that's a geology is all about. So anyway, but, but if one wants to pursue that. Let's suggest a way of regaining our regulations.
Okay.
My point is, is entirely different. But my point is if you draw a line across the map, any line, no matter how you turn, just. Say this is the line and if your, if your property is being touched by this line, you're in. If it's not, you're out. You have to state where this line is. You can't just draw a line and say, well, perhaps we're just going to eyeball it. And again, I am, based on my conversation with Mark Stacy, believe that we have a line defined in real world coordinates. Which is surveillable. And, uh, that's important. Would you suggest that we survey that line? No, we don't need to survey that line. It's surveillable. So if a property owner wants to know, how do you know if my property is, you know, inside of A P O Z? How can you show it, show that to, have you proved to me? We have something which can be taken to a surveyor and he can establish that back. And, and or if a property owner says, where is the line across my property? That's also surveillable. And I'm saying that's important information should be preserved. And if we, if, when we should modify a line, that should be recorded. It, real world coordinates, so we have that. So, but not arguing about where the line is. I'm just saying you need to state where that line is. Because again, that's, that's what we're using for governance. That's what we're using to say whether, whether the property's in or out. We can't just eyeball it. You can't go to the court and say to the judge, you know, well, we think it's, we think it's not right. And we have that line. So it's initiated files, so you've got the, yeah. That's how these maps are put together.
Mr. Ger. Yeah. So, okay, I guess part of my concern is, so. I get what you're, you're, where you come from, uh, Mr. Platt. So we've got the line on the map right now, right? So. Now, when we get updated data and things shift to one way or the other. And our other, something else shifts. So then now the line is in a different spot. So we just, you know, if somebody ever came and asked us where it was on this specific spot. I mean, if you did it today and then we do it five years later, it could be in a different area. Okay? How is that not true?
A, a line defined by coordinates doesn't change no matter what you do with the map.
Yeah, and there's, it's not defined by coordinates.
Well, I, again, I'm telling you, based on my conversation with Mark Stacy, it is defined by coordinates. They didn't just draw, they didn't just, like, take out pencil, draw a line on the map.
Would, would it be helpful if I talked with Mark Stacy just to get that clarified? Cause maybe I'm just not understanding, but.
Yeah, I, I, yeah.
Because we, we, when we sat in the meetings, we talked about, you know, where the potential 75 feet line could be. Um, but then we also talked about, we need a surveillable line. And so that was why he built in the line that goes out to, to, um, property lands. Um, so I, I guess if, if I felt like he felt comfortable with that 75 feet line being surveyed. Then I, I don't know why he didn't push back on moving that out. That's, I guess that's where I'm, I'm not clear.
Yeah, well.
And I've never heard that from him.
I, I, some of the reasons why we're going out to the property boundaries because that is in fact, much more easily administered. But the choice of that parcel, whether or not they include it or not, is based on this black line, which therefore we have to respect it with that. That's, that's what I just had.
Well, yeah, so the, the premise of.
If you know where it is, then, then in fact, it's, it's arbitrary.
The line, the line is that red, is the line that goes out and follows parceling. That is what is being proposed by Stan Tech to be our western.
But that's based off the black line again. Whether or not, whether or not we're included in that parcel or not, it's based on where that black line, whether or not it's actually, actually physically in the real world located, crossing over that property or not. We can't determine that by looking at this diagram because things are shifting. All right, let's, let's try to bring this to some kind of conclusion. The question before us is, are we or are we not prepared to accept Stan Tech recommended A P O Z western? I'm sort of prepared to accept that. All right, well, let's, sorry. How do we feel about that? Given all these discussions of issues and the imprecise world we live in, that's the challenge of regulations. Are we, are we uncomfortable with that or?
I'm uncomfortable, I'm uncomfortable with putting a huge burden on people where the property may be, if, you know. Slid off the property maybe in the, in the. Correction zone and most of it not, just because it's, you know. Hundred feet away survey line. I think that is undue burden that will, uh, cause a lot of people. A lot of expenses to even figure out where they are and, and, and challenge our regulations. And, and given that the, even the line line to me should have done differently. I feel uncomfortable putting this burden on people.
And, and what's your reaction to? I, my solution to that, which I completely agree with you, particularly if it's a large piece for the show on the court. Is to invite them to apply to have the line. That, that's my answer to your question. Did I share your concern? Is that unsatisfactory? Instead of talking about multiple, this goes. That's a workable solution. And if, uh, what other thoughts might be applied to that?
I think it's a solution for the short term. It depends on, well. Because we have a long term. For the long term, there'll be more and more parcels, especially if we account for the world area. North and south of the technical city along the aquifer boundary. It will be more and more and more people affected. I don't know if there is any better solution, but, uh. I just don't feel comfortable with that. Putting the burden on people. I would much rather that we do. Provide a service of survey, surveying the.
All right, thoughts on this?
Yeah, so that large rectangle we were looking at before, I think we have a comment on that by a donor. Objecting to all of the D V in the A P O Z. The process for getting a lot of that out of the A P O Z. Could he just res, could he resurvey a new line that goes? Two thirds of the way east and then free up, free up. Western part of his property because he doesn't have to, you know, he has to provide. A surveillable line, a surveyed line that is. a little bit west of the land. Is that right?
That would be the idea.
So when he says.
Oh, that's.
Yeah, it, it, it really is just a matter of surveying. That is at least a little bit west of. Is that right?
That's, that's.
Okay.
Let me, let me show you an example of that. Can you scroll up to the icicle? Yes, I mean, I'll, yeah. No, that's, that's where my thoughts are going. I've actually scrapped this language that I can, that I can share when I get to that point of providing an exit path that is proportionate to the problem.
I think it simplifies as much as possible.
Right, right. And it really depends on how. Okay, so, so.
There, this is it. That's right, yeah, yeah.
This is.
I mean, that's one of my houses right there.
Yeah, right, so this, this, what I'm seeing is an orange line, which is the red that this being suggested by Stan Tech, is the little spike that's sticking down there. Okay.
Oh, that, that one is.
The reason that there's that spike is because the black line clips about halfway through that triangular piece. And the rule was, it was, I don't mean rule as in law, but the, the rubric, whatever you wanna call it, was if that black line bisects your property, your whole property is in. So that's what brought that whole triangle, including that point that sticks down. Now, it's, it's, again, I'm not given to absolutes, but it is impossible for that to be true. Because you can't go out of the A P O Z, as you proceed west, and then go back in. Can't have issue of entry. So if that owner, or Mr. Charles, I think, were to say, let's cut off that tooth. And here it is, the survey line between those two points. And the reason I want to do that is because it's a geometric possibility for it to not meet the seventy-five feet. We would say, sure. The cost to them would be whatever it costs to have a surveyor describe connecting. Can you put the cursor and connect the points I'm talking about? And I'd ask Mr. Bridge this question, he said he would be uncomfortable to say, connect that point to that point. You could just say it, but he'd like to see it as a survey statement. That's, so here's a case where this gentleman, if he cared, is currently zoned agriculture. Maybe he's never gonna do anything with it. If he was unhappy with his inclusion in the A P O Z under our rubric, he would fill out an application. His reason would be, can't happen. And here's where I think the line would be here, so it's surveyed, and it would cost him, I don't know, three hundred bucks. That, that's, that would be one.
So it is unnecessary for a much wealth to figure out where the.
Not in this case.
Go with the black line and just survey.
Well, in this case, this is, I bring this up, this would be the absolute cheapest, because it's a no brainer. There's no question about the geometry. There's no ambiguity to it.
What if he says he wants all that area because the black line is just an approximate? And the green line is an approximate? And we, by moving the black, green line to the black line, we took a big chunk of his land? And then, then we move it all the way to the boundary, and that's a big chunk, so.
Okay, under, under my scheme, the, and I, I'm proposing, I put some language to it, and you see how you guys feel about it. The answer to that question would be, the more precisely you want to shave that, the higher your burden to prove you're in it. So if you've got a, in that case, that, that pieces, let's say the whole triangle is forty acres, and you want to recapture that, you want to move that point that's maybe ten acres out. So you can do that for five hundred bucks out. If you want to move twenty-one point seven acres out, and just kiss that black line, then I'm gonna make you prove to me the black line's in the right place. And maybe you'll have to drill a well. So if you want to shave it really close, you have to have proportionately more data to, to confirm the black line's in the right place. Because the black line is an approximation of this one, it's just a mess. And that's this earlier discussion we're having. So the burden would be on you as the landowner. Find your price point. You want to peel off five more acres from the A P O Z, it'll cost you twenty thousand dollars. That's, that's, my thoughts were going is to leave that up to the landlord. But no, it's not just a matter of surveying the black line.
Yeah.
Mr.? Yeah, Mr. Chair, the one thing I would add is, like, if, I mean, what it'd be, what is being proposed is that we create the western boundary. So, and, and the aquifer protection overlay zone. So we would adopt that. It wouldn't include the black line or the green line or anything else, or just have the boundary. So that's, that's what we're gonna be looking at. So I don't think there's gonna be a whole lot of confusion. We'll have the, the maps that are in the cap, or the Casper Aquifer Protection Plan that will include the black line. But, you know, when we adopt the regulations, it will be, this is the boundary, one line.
My question for you.
Then we'll have a, I'm suggesting we would have in the regulation, like we did before, here's, here's how you petition to change that.
Absolutely, yes, yes. How do you appropriate?
The question I have is, how many lawsuits do we want to fight?
I don't know, how many have been done so far, Matt?
How many lawsuits do we want to fight? And how long do we want to drag this process?
The unfortunate thing is, there's gonna be lawsuits no matter what.
What would you advise of those would be your corollary?
My, my gut feeling, my, my modus operandi would be to survey the black line as called by Richard Platt.
No, I did not propose that. I'm saying we know that where the line is right now already. I'm not proposing to survey the line.
Are you saying that it's surveillable?
I'm saying it's surveillable as it exists right now, as Stan Tech.
You'll be wrong, but that's what I'm saying.
I mean, my, my advice at this point is that we do get a resolution on, on whether or not that is surveillable. Before moving, putting anything in stone on this. So, I think that, we could get a solid answer on that, yes, right now.
Yeah, I can ask Mark, you know, if he said that, then he can, I guess, tell us. Give us.
Then ask a surveyor. Mark is not a surveyor.
Correct, yes. Which sounds like Mr. Platt may know a few surveyors. I don't know. I haven't asked. I never did. Correct.
So, what I'm hearing from Mr. David would be, you'd like to explore us setting the A P O Z western boundary on the black line despite whatever works and blemishes it might entail. And be aware that the cap explicitly says, we don't really know where the line is very close in these areas. Mr. Stacy, that if I turn three specific areas where he said, this is all pretty fuzzy, I recommend that this is spent in county book rules and wells.
Well, I'm not in a legal profession, and I don't know what the judge would say. But if we come, and on one hand we say, this is the science, this is the best we can approximate the science. This is the aquifer protection line. And then we say, and we move it and burden people, we move it west, because A, we are not, we want it to be easy, so we know where the survey line is, and, and we're not sure where the exact line is. How are you gonna, how, how can we defend this? I, I can, I don't feel comfortable defending this, but I'm not of oil.
Um, you know, I, I have some ideas about what other state courts have said about this. Wyoming courts, I've said nothing about this. Um, but out of a North Carolina line of cases discussing specifically overlay zones, you know, the, the rule that they apply is, it's just, it has to be a rational distinction. I think the exact quote is that governments can draw distinctions based upon significantly less than mathematical exactitude. So it's really just, you know, it's, it's the, the rationale that is provided, is it a reasonable imposition? Courts are not supposed to substitute their judgment for that of the officials which were duly elected or appointed. So there could be case by case instances where distinction could be found to be arbitrary, not guided by sufficient rational bases, but that doesn't necessarily validate the entirety of it. So, I think, you know, that's, that's really what, that's what policymakers have to grapple with. And just because two people could have reached a different outcome does not make it inherently arbitrary.
And, Mr. Chair? Please. I, I would just add, you know, I appreciate your concern, and I know Matt appreciates your concern over the legality of what we're doing. I think we have different ideas or thoughts on what maybe that will be. But, I mean, we're, we're early in this process. I think we need to vet all of this to make sure that we're doing things that is legally defensible. I think that's all of our goals. So I, I hope you don't feel like we don't want that. We, I do, I want it to be legally defensible. I know Matt does, I know, I know you guys all do. So we're all on the same team here, we just need to come up with, you know, what is legally defensible and what isn't, we should be doing. And, and maybe you're right, maybe we need a, you know, survey the line, or may, maybe that's not the, maybe we do, you know, follow the, the property boundaries. But, but yeah, I think we're all in the same, same boat there, so just wanted to state that.
Well, that was the point of just having a big, open discussion. But the other thing we're trying to do here is protect the apple. So if I don't know where the line is, that would argue, be cautious. So if you're going to error, let's error in the direction of a, of a large rate. You'll see, that would be a fundamental planning policy decision. Now, it's not, it's not tightly consistent, it's not mathematically precise. Good, I'm sorry, Dad, I had a question.
Yeah, I just put it up to just re, remind us what were the problems last time? The legal problem, and now it's fixed.
Last time, oh.
The, the challenge that.
Yeah, it was saying that when we were amending the A P O Z regulations, we were bound by the provision that we were amending for notice and evidence for changing the boundary line. So there, there's a provision. So, yeah. The regulations had a provision on how to amend the boundary, and it's basically the court said, you didn't follow that.
Even though we were amending in that process, at the same time.
The boundary was considered illegal because we didn't go.
We didn't follow our own regulations. Exactly.
Not because it wasn't defensible.
Correct.
No, it didn't, it didn't get to any, like, the previous appeal did not make any ruling on substantive issues like, like this, whether it's a defensible line or, you know, that, or that even Albany County has the authority to.
I guess I had.
Regulate where I was just.
And the city did their boundary that way fifteen years ago, and it has stood, and people have offered to, to abide by. Ms. Hennig?
Thank you. Yeah, this is a difficult conversation to try to sort this out. I, I guess, thinking pragmatically, like, looking at the, as you call it, the icicle, with our current regs, were that to be subdivided? An S S I would have had to be done to determine what part of the subdivision had to meet A P O Z requirements and which part didn't need to. So like pragmatically, these big lots were, if they wanted to subdivide, they were already gonna get thrown into the S S I process, if, if I understand that correctly. So that, that cost burden already existed for that property owner. Whether you move the boundary to the property line or keep it as a line that goes through the middle of it, notwithstanding Burns' idea of paying a certain amount to just, like, take, take a certain amount off without going right up to that black line. But the, the black line is, there's a lot of interpolation. There's a lot of error in how drillers are keeping track of where, where they go from one rock type to another. Probably none of the tops of these wells have been surveyed. I mean, there, there's just, just inherently a lot of error in where that line gets drawn. And it seems like in cases where it cuts through a, a majority of the lot, it makes sense to me to move it to the property boundary for for straightforward administration of where a surveillable line is. And maybe in instances where the black line cuts through, like, less than ten percent of the property, I, I don't know what number is appropriate, you shift it to, to the eastern part of the property boundary. Like, I'm thinking of that first lot we were looking at, to the south of Laramie, where I can see why it would feel unfair to that owner to have so much of the property all of a sudden included in the A P O Z.
Even this property, I have. You're on that level square.
Just listen.
Yeah, absolutely.
But anyway, I, I don't know if there's like a, a definitive way we could say, oh, you, your barrel, your property is barely in, we're gonna, we're gonna move you to the eastern edge of your property lot. Or you're, you're pretty far in, we're gonna go to the west with, to your property line. But ultimately, because of all of the error that can be compounded in how these estimates are made, if, if, if the county wants to be more conservative and more protective of the, of the Casper aquifer, then it is appropriate to go to the eastern property boundary. And, and we just have to have that strength in our conviction that that's how it should be. But I, I, I know, we, we all feel a little empathetic to some of these property owners who, who don't agree with that. But at, at any rate, I mean, David, you'll have to tell me if I'm interpreting this wrong. The way our regs are right now, if the, if the interpolated boundary line cuts through your property and you want to subdivide it, you're probably gonna have to do an S S I to show where that boundary really is. Is, is that correct?
Um, so, Mr. Chair, the S S I would not be required to show where the boundary is. If it's part of a property that's going to be subdivided, because it's part of that subdivision, yes, they would have to do an S S I. But I believe it would only be on the portion that's, you know, on the other side of the line. So I guess they kind of figure out, and so, but I, I don't know, I mean. Right, so.
In the case of the city, the, if I understand correctly, during the, the S S I, if data is discovered that would move the line to one direction or the other, then the city goes with that being the new line. They, they don't hold you to the, the drawn line. But the county maybe doesn't have that fluidity built into the, the process.
Yeah, it's not built in.
Do you think the city does that?
I don't, I don't know, I, I've not asked.
Worth of exploration, it sounds like.
I, I thought there was a little more fluidity i- in the city boundary based on data collected in the S S I. Well, that, that's all I have. I, I, I don't expect we're gonna solve this tonight. But, but it, it does seem like we have to be pragmatic about the inherent flaws to how that line got drawn. And I guess the ultimate question that we have to find out from Stan Tech is, is that black line actually something that's surveillable? Because that, that seems. Um, cause that, that seems like that would be a determining factor in what we do. Thanks.
I think that you, you raise an interesting point of perhaps that the SSI is the, is the off-ramp that I've been looking for. Um, and, and I think it's important that. It only matters if someone wants to develop. I mean, the, the, the most egregious error in the western boundary of the SS. The APOZ is south of Census Springs. The line was originally drawn, was before the geologic mapping that they have available to establish completed. And it literally lies on top of outcropping Casp. It's one of the few places that would be, as your pen name is concerned, you can stand there on the ground. The answer to thickness of Zataca is zero because you're standing on the line, so. Has it been an issue? No. It's out in Big Ranch and the owner has cared what we're in of. So I do think there's value in, you know. Reminding ourselves that in ever so many cases. The landowner isn't going to care whether the APOZ or not, so we need not bust the. Budget brain cells to figure it out. Now, if they are and they have a plan to, to do a development of subdivision. Or perhaps build up like a, uh, used to be prohibited otherwise. Then we got something to talk about and maybe we can focus our attention there. Again, my thoughts keep coming back to let's, let's. Dial up the microscope where it matters and it may not matter everywhere. It doesn't matter. Vern, please.
Just back a little bit, going through all these comments we have after February, which are near me. A lot of those folks are saying, I don't want to be in the APOZ. They didn't say they had any plans. They said, leave me out. This, this is over governance. They sound unhappy. And I'm, I'm agreeing with what you're saying, but I'm saying, also, some people do care, but I think it was. Their, their plans it might have.
Yeah, I know, okay, geez, they're cavalier about their care, but, but.
You understand what I'm saying?
As I say. Yes, there are many people in those comments who are like that. You're all a bunch of communists who want to steal my children. I mean. We have to modulate, but I didn't just, we're in the regulation game and zoning is about. Looting, like this.
And you still, I mean, you could still challenge it through declaratory judgment action. Even if you didn't have plans, you have the restriction placed on you and that's enough harm for standing.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm not suggesting they don't, they don't have standing. It's just that. If someone has a project as, as Hanning suggested, I want to subdivide. I'm, I have something concrete. I've got a team of surveyors and geologists that's working for me. That might be a simple place to exercise an offer from the regulation to refine about. This practical matter, this is a legal matter that you have to have that to stand.
Mr. Trivon, uh, I've asked Joe to bring up something, just as a graphic illustration. Of why, I'm saying, we need to know what the black line is. He's, he's showing the black line here and if you look, uh, to the right of that black line, you can see an irregular shaped property. With, uh, the thin black lines showing the GAS property boundaries, I guess the county ancestor has. And you can see the actual property underneath and it's offset. It's totally offset.
Say that again, it's all what?
Offset. The property underneath is totally offset. Uh, by, I don't know, it could be 20 feet, I don't know.
Okay.
So one of those three lines, one of those three things is not right. Either the black line, you know, either the green line is the wrong place. Or the copy line is the wrong place, or, or the image is the wrong place.
Yeah, but neither the black line and the green line poses to be property damage.
Now, I know that, but I'm saying, this is why we need to know where the black line is. Because we don't know necessarily that all the things we're looking at are in a different place.
That is also something to consider. Sometimes the property line does not follow the exact survey line.
That's right.
Um.
That's also right.
That. Quite a bit of my property is within a fencing of my neighbor.
There can be errors in survey. There are.
And, yeah, so, yeah.
But to me, this illustrates just the opposite point of. That black line could be 200 feet wide and it would not affect. Any decision about whether you're in the APOZ or not.
Not right there, but in some other place.
Well, some other place, but that illustrates the point of, we don't need to know where that black line is with the. I don't know, I can't, so it's still, it's probably a hundred feet, it'd be fine.
Okay, that is well, the greatest group.
All right, anyway. Is there more to be said on the mountain? Obviously, I. Can forms, which was my intention.
All right.
I don't think that this is a highly contentious point of the.
Thank you, Jim.
Go in that direction. What, so what? We queued up a couple of things to research. In terms of the surveillability of the line. That's, like, I, since I've already written it up, I will, I will provide my colleagues with my. Yeah. Conceptual level idea of what I'm calling a, an off-ramp. It's not terribly expensive, but then it's just. Parcel by parcel. Um, what else do we need to assign ourselves or our staff? Now, the next time we discuss this to help bring this to a conclusion. Keeping in mind that we have. Few things going on here. One is, what are we going to come out of this with as the western boundary of the APOZ? We need, we need a map. And we need a way to describe that line. And then secondly. Do we? Want to have criteria for, for challenging that. And, and now, I forgot to ask earlier, Mr. Harris, if you could remind us. One of the event, one of the things that we did in the February 2023, the board did, was to exempt. Boundary change to APOZ from the district. Zoning District Amendment process. So right now, what is the process for changing the APOZ boundary? Let's assume we have one that we've accepted and it's all good.
Uh, we, where are we? Uh, we said that the, the APOZ boundary may be amended based upon, uh, the cap and its updates.
And so.
Yeah, that just puts us under administrative procedure act procedurally, uh, but does it quite as not shoe, shoehorn us into specific things. That have to be found and provided for that to happen. So now we're back to how you would establish any zoning district from the beginning. First, rulemaking.
Okay, that's, that's, that's what I thought. We should be kind of recruitment, say. We, for whatever reasons, want to do this, we would post it for public comment and off we go.
Yeah, with that, I would still advise that, you know, and we start that procedure with the, the, the cap update. Um, as our, our basis.
Okay. And then I thought that Mr. Corning has brought. Forward without the objection from us.
Yeah.
Um, the current process has no notification requirements beyond just the, like any other regulation. That we talked about, you know, not wanting to put signs on every base that's affected. By somehow, but somehow requiring ourselves to notice folks that something's changed.
I do have a case.
Right now.
If it's on the level of the assessors.
So what, what do we want to do with that? I don't know, we need a decision right now. David, maybe you could. Or, or Mr. Harris, the question's notification, because. As per what Mr. Harris has told us, we are under no special notification requirements if we move the APOZ boundary. We notify like we would any other amendment to the zoning resolution.
Right.
But do we want to create a, a notice standard for changing the APOZ boundary? And then more specifically, do we want to institute something for, for this zoning boundary change? Or process of creating? There's talk about a mailing or something. So are there further thoughts, developments on that?
Um, I mean, so what would be, I would recommend lately be done as we do the 30 days before a public hearing here. And then obviously the 45 days before the Florida County Commissioners. Anything above and beyond that. Um, you know, that's, that's totally up to you. I mean, we could all open houses. We could, we can notice that way. We could send mailers. We could, you know, blast on social media. We could do whatever you'd like to get the word out and to have discussion with the public. So, um, everything above and beyond is like, that's just what, what we can do, so.
What are your thoughts? I mean, I, we understand that we don't have to do anything beyond, of course, the 30, the 45, the.
Right.
Things. So what's your, what's your thinking of? Would that be, would that just be. Stirring harness test? Would that be a responsible thing for us to do? What, what's your thinking?
Yes, all of the above.
All of the above, and maybe stirring harness tests.
I could just send out a postcard with the, you know, with the new map and a, we can come up with a simple. Achievable way of challenging a boundary if you're not, if you don't. If you're, if you're not happy with your property in the zone, this is what you can do. Keep it simple, try to make it as, as simple as it can be and still be protected of the.
Wait, so you, we would have the, the exclusion process prior to even implementing the new boundary? Cause then that would.
It would be all, it's all part of the same document, right?
Well, so we would have to put, we would have to go through full APA rulemaking in order to. Give that process any effect. Well, I mean.
Well, I think it is, it's a proposed boundary and a proposed process.
Well, there'd be two things. One would be. We are proposing, Stantec has recommended the follow-up boundary that affects your property. Read all about it. This website.
Something like that. I mean, it might help. Not so, not quite so much people on this, of course.
Yeah, it's interesting.
Um, I guess to the notice and opportunity for the public to review. Um, I can tell you just, if we wanted to do like an open house, say, hey, we're going to do this open house. And we're gonna, you know, ha- have this and we want you to come and check out and see where your property is along this line and see if you're active. We want to discuss what's going on and we do it through the paper, newspaper, we'll get three people at the meeting. Those are, those are super ineffective. Now. I've never, I think that if we did kind of the same thing and we sent out a mailer to people that are directly affected to it. We might get a better response because they'll be put on notice. Specifically, it's not just something that shows up in the paper. We might get a better response. I, I'm kind of curious what that would look like. But I would, I, I would suggest doing that. Try something like that and maybe have some kind of an online thing where we can have the map. Um, they can look at it. Um, they can provide us comments, maybe through email or, or however we want to. But I, I, I think we should do some pretty good outreach on this. I think it would be an opportunity. Um, to really, you know, just get, get input from property owners. And maybe before we did something like that, maybe we have the process, okay, this is what the line we're proposing or thinking about. And then here is the process to potentially get out of that, you know.
Draft.
Yeah, a draft process so that we can get input on both of those things, because all it has to do with the line, right? And that's, that's going to be the most contentious part about, I think, this whole process, especially with the regulations is the line. Um, and then obviously maybe the next subject that we haven't really got to is. Um, what type of septic system they, they can use on the property. Um, that'll be another thing. But, but I, I think we should do something like that. I think, I mean, yeah, I'm great with mailers, but I think we don't, we don't do that. In a, a public hearing format, but let's make it informal, but it, give them an invitation. Maybe we have a barbecue. I don't know, but. We'll have some super good cookies that'll be donated by.
I, I think it's in the wrong timeline, but when you get your, uh. Letter in the mail from the assessor saying, you know, the Texas taxes will look like, et cetera. Um. For those property owners, can we have a, like an added line saying, please notice that you're, uh. Because of the changes to the, uh, protections on your property now. People pay a lot of attention to that mailer. But I don't know, probably they already went out in May and we want to hold it soon.
Yeah, I, I would have to talk with the assessor on that. I'm not sure how that all works. Yeah, so I guess it'd be a little too late unless we do it next year.
How, how many properties do you know that? How many properties are, if we were to take the AP, take the Stantec proposed APOZ boundary compared to the ones today. How many properties are.
I would say somewhere between 50 and 75. I mean, a rough guess. I mean, I actually did do kind of a, a GES survey of, you know, use the line and kind of figure that out, but. Um, I'm still not certain on the accuracy, but just because of, yeah, a number of factors. But I think that's what we're looking at. So it's not like a huge number of people. Um, it's definitely less than a hundred. I'd say probably around 50, 60. It's pretty good to guess.
So we could send them all a note of the break, thank.
Yeah, and then, I mean, we might, that, that list may be less than that if there's multiple, or, you know, multiple properties owned by the same person. Or something like that, too, so. Or if it's state property or federal property.
Oh, sure.
They will, they will say that.
I didn't know about this meeting. I saw this sign and so I came and I called and then I got here, but I did not know.
To their address. There's not much more you can do.
Right. So based off the number of petitioning landowners in the current APOZ view. You're like, relative about a third. Deals, so.
Well, but I don't have awareness.
These are just people that the property status changed.
Yeah, that's all I think of is peel off the strip. Many of the, of the plaintiffs in there, they're, they were in the APOZ. They've always been in the APOZ. They stay in.
So in, in, where they've changed, it might be even less, because I think I just went along the line and just like pulled up every property that touched the line or whatever.
Yeah, but that's.
But they might, some of them might already be in the, that area.
But things will change for everybody. That's the right change, so it wouldn't hurt.
And then if we did that, we're looking at probably like 200, 300 people. That know boundary. So, yeah, I mean, I guess how, depends on how you want to do this. Do we do it just for the boundary line or are we doing it for the whole thing? Um, if, if that's the case, we probably want to get, get some work in something that we think is a good draft. Before we would go forward with something like that, I would think. Unless we want to do like a pre and a post. I mean, we do that a lot of times with plans. So you, you get people and say, what do you want to see? And they'll say, well, I want to see that I'm not in this boundary, you know?
But I mean, I thought it was, it would just be the boundary. A million opportunities to talk about the cap and, oh, listen to, that's what we do. Just be, hey, Diana. Your property didn't, wasn't in the cap, in the APOZ before, now it is. Thought you might like know, here's where you could send a cap, something as simple as. And I don't know, I wish you could think of an open house or something, just to notice.
Maybe we could do that as well.
You could just hear, submit your comments to this.
I mean, the goal for me would be is to, to talk to people, you know, to talk to them like, hey, looks like I'm in this, you know, what is going on? And I can say, let me look. Okay, yeah, it looks like you are in this. This is what it's going to mean if you use a property on her. And then we can walk through those things, you know?
That's good.
I think.
Person to person can be something.
Much of that on the line, that just.
And I can't guarantee just because we sent out a bunch of letters, um, that we're going to get a bunch of people. However, the times that I've done that, we have got a lot of people, but they're very controversial issues, too, which this is.
Would you say call, call Mr. Gertrude, you say come to him?
I mean, it could be either way, you know, it could be call, call me or come to a meeting. It's nice to just get everybody there, just talking to people and. I mean, that way it's not just me answering everything. I could have staff there as well to, to help answer questions. And maybe both, you know, I don't know. If you can't make it, give me a call or stop by the office, make an appointment, so.
Okay, that's all I had on. Anything else? The deeds discussed at this point, obviously, this is going to go off for some time, but we've got something. Does our county commissioner want to weigh in on any of this? So like, we're in the right direction? I mean, our job is to take the take the, the hornet's nest stirred up so that by the time those guys show up, it's it's all missing.
Cheryl Hinckley, I liked the idea of sending something out, but I know that David has done it in the past and people have said, I didn't get it or whatever, whether or not they did. But in the past, controversial issues that we've had to deal with, people said, why didn't you send something out? And whether or not they got it, that was their way of feeling like they would have had more notice. So whatever we can do, I wouldn't go as far as a barbecue, start sending the presidents who we don't
Well, just that I might get skewered and be on the barbecue.
Right. I like that approach, you know, that you're trying to be as transparent and as, as what available, accessible, the information.
All right, well, the second piece, which I think is more just to just start thinking about it. We're not going to run into ground on the septic systems. As you know, that's going to come through, see, there's been just there's been crazy talk out there that the city is delivering a sixty thousand dollar bill that everybody lives on my graph for. That's nuts. There, there's a wealth of information in the draft cap. Where they looked at what other jurisdictions you're doing. So I would commend that to anybody that's interested in this. Is enhanced systems and additional systems and I don't mind being quoted on that. Wyoming DEQ is quite ambiguous on the topic. Words are used inconsistently, the criteria are imprecise. But we have asked our consultant to give us specific criteria for what, what my new septic system. Now, there's different ways that the county can approach this and different authorities. The current cap and the one that's been in place, versions of the cap zoning regulations have been placed for twenty seven years now, talks about inspections, for example, and when you sell the property, how often you're supposed to come back and so forth. And a lot of pretty granular stuff that some would argue are more appropriately addressed through through a design, structure standards. Delegate through the delegation group, as it's called. Albany County has been authorized by DEQ to enforce their regulations. So there's three different spots where Albany County gets involved in septic. One is through zoning resolution. And passed, we have passed zoning resolutions that have, say, inspection requirements. Recall that in subdivision regulations, we submit a subdivision application to state DEQ for water wastewater suitability study, and they may come back to us and say, we think the nitrate balance indicates the need for enhanced septic. So we're kind of in a septic game through the subdivision. I don't know that Albany County has ever faced an adverse comment from DEQ. So if they were to do that, then we would have to require it through some kind of a, I guess, I guess our authority to require it would be through the subdivision regulation. And then thirdly.
Yeah, so they have required enhanced, and I mean, essentially that, that.
But then do we, we Albany County say?
Well, yeah.
You have to do enhance. I mean, I was right there.
I guess they're required on the plat.
Yeah, once it's on the plat, we follow what their notes are. So they've added them to multiple subdivisions we've had. We've put that on the plat, and then we enforce that through our permit.
Correct. And it's almost like a covenant for.
Okay, so then the third piece that where we get our arms around it is that Albany County has a water wastewater engineer that writes the permit. Before with your property, you say, here's my APOZ required of a DEQ staff or septic system. Here's how we feel this is what we do. So the county can address its concerns with septic systems in any of those three places. There's authority going to wander around out there and not look insured. And there might be reasons why you would do it one way versus another. So I'm not clear on what latitude we have for each of those three vehicles that we want to layer them on top of each other and don't compromise our legal position, but what's the, where are those various authorities? Where do you think it's appropriate for the county to weigh on what likes to second?
Now, I mean, there there is good argument that I guess like the rec, you you could regulate and dictate types of septic systems or, you know, setbacks just purely through the zoning authority. But there's also the the counterargument that since otherwise that authority for maybe permitting and everything else is exclusively with DEQ, that the state has preempted, you know, kind of zoning authority over septic systems. But it's an undecided question in the state of Wyoming. And really, since we already have that delegated authority under the Environmental Quality Act for the permitting of individual septic systems. It would seem to me that that would be the natural place for regulations impacting individual septic systems to reside. And then, of course, there is their subdivision. I think as I said before, Lincoln County basically says they have a little table and it says, this is the density of your subdivision. This is the type of wastewater system the subdivision will have. You know, it goes from like their ag standard, you can have a lot of individual septic. Maybe what I guess for us would be like small lot residential, they say you have to have at least enhanced septic. And then with, you know, urban residential or anything, you know, more dense, you just have to have a centralized sewer system. But that does not help with the issue of individual septic systems because that's still on the subdivision line thing. And then, of course, you know, the subdivision permit that controls what individuals can do within that subdivision. But if you don't already have that, that gets you back either to zoning or to the small wastewater permitting. And again, since that authority is explicitly in the small wastewater delegation agreement, where the requirement is just that we have standards that are at least as stringent as those of DEQ. AKA their their chapter twenty-five standards. It would seem to me that that would be the most logical place to put those standards for individual septic systems that that happen to be in the APOZ. Since already, you know, before we were trying to incorporate that sort of ghost standard of, you know, requiring advanced treatment for any any septic systems within zone two of a wellhead protection plan, which is in chapter twenty-five, which essentially with their changes has been rendered unknowable, what exactly that is.
So the, that model in the zoning resolution. All of that stuff about inspections and so forth, we stripped and put it
Yeah, and I mean, there is, you know, there, I found a publication from the sorry, I mispronounced it, but you correct it. Ruckel House? Ruckel's House. Ruckel's House Institute. They did a water quality legal analysis of that and the HOP school for regulating water quality within Fish Creek up in Teton County. And, you know, based off of their their college of law students and I guess whatever professors are signing off on it, they said, yeah, there is the authority through zoning to dictate where and what kind of septic systems structures will have. Now, we don't know if that is what the Wyoming Supreme Court would say, but I would, I would certainly advise to put it where we know that we for sure have that authority, which is the small wastewater permitting regulations.
And that isn't something that have to be negotiated with DEQ as long as we are as stringent or more so. That's something that Albany Cat can do unilaterally within the parameters of the delegation group. As far as you know.
As far as I know. Yeah, I mean, we we, once we get that in, we would submit that to DEQ for their review. But I mean, that's the standard for the operability of the delegation. And it's also a shall issue delegation agreement. If a if a county asks for delegation of small wastewater permitting, that DEQ shall give them that authority. So. Yeah, and I guess I'd just add to what Matt's saying. It just, it just makes a whole lot of sense to put this information in there. Especially when we're talking about advanced systems and stuff, we're going to have some definitions and kind of flush this out a little better. I mean, even though the state doesn't, we would like to know what we're talking about. And there will be situations in the county where, I mean, there could be situations that that we require or DEQ requires an advanced system outside of aquifer protection. This isn't just an aquifer protection issue, you know? This is other areas that they do, they do that warm and mild and it comes out to above, you know, ten milligrams per liter. And then, you know, now now we've got to, that's usually what they'll make them do is put in the advanced system. So, I mean, I think just having that information in there, period, you know, just having it in that document, it needs to be there, you know? And there's no reason to have it in zoning as well, but it needs to be in that document because it's currently not there. We don't have that information.
And that would include things like the recommendation for replacement or repair.
Correct, yeah. I mean, in in that document, we could have, I mean, we would just have a section for aquifer protection overlay zone and then have those standards and then other places we could have, you know.
What's the, what's the full title? What's the design, construction?
It's like permitting.
Reconstruction and operation of small wastewater permitting.
It's it's a long title.
Well, so and then, I mean, that encompasses multiple phases, especially the operation of it. You know, that permit's still covering its operation, which, you know, it's not just a one-off, you submitted the plants. That's all we can require from you type thing.
Yeah. Designing construction standard for small wastewater facilities and regulations for permit to construct, install or modify small wastewater facilities.
So the the cap that we're looking at, there's a whole section of that, table six point seven, that's just loaded with those kinds of recommendations. They were contemplating it in zoning, but it sounds to me like we could follow the direction of the cap and just move that into.
Absolutely.
So as prior discussion, do you want to take a stab at bringing those pieces of the cap into that regulation rather than in his own?
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea.
That'd be a good next step. Thoughts on that, my colleagues?
Are there any commissioners that might be able to assist?
Don't ask us to remember the title.
Okay, Ms. Anna, you're kidding. She's got some septic expertise.
I love septic systems. I'd be happy to help out. I I just had one question for you, Mr. Ayers. Has there been any challenges on the Lincoln County approach so far?
Not that I'm aware of. I guess my other big question, which I still have not received the answer to, after reaching out to officials up there, is whether they have that whether they have the delegation for the review of the safety and effectiveness of subdivision water and sewage systems under what eighteen-five, three oh six. Sometimes feel like getting reached out to by attorneys.
Do they have their new planner in Lincoln County yet?
They have one.
Their new planner?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's back on your list for things we're going to see next. Cool. All right, other thoughts on the implementation of the cap? Those were the things I thought we had at least sessions we went by.
No, Mr. Chairman. Sorry, when it comes to the small wastewater regulations, statutorily, that's not something that the planning and zoning commission is involved in. And again, certainly something that that could be reviewed by by planning and zoning. But I would recommend that there be essentially a directive from the county commissioners to do so.
Yeah, I guess my thought is that by omission, if we are going to just take it out of our our regs zoning resolution, that's an affirmative action on the part of this board, that that we are trying to coordinate our overall response to the cap recommendations. I don't know what the mechanism is exactly, but that's why I guess I feel like we're we're in that game to some extent. Certainly because we're coming off twenty-five years of it being there.
Okay, yeah, I don't know. It just, it would not require any sort of certification.
Yeah, 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 yeah. It would be absolutely from our certification of this model.
Yeah, okay. And if we need to get approval from the board, I'm sure they would be fine reviewing those.
I'm not looking for work here, but just trying to make sure that we coordinate the various. Okay. Mr. Gerst, put a cap update on. What else do you want to say about the cap?
Nothing really. Just the hearings on July fifth. So we'll see how that goes. Nine thirty, be there, be squared.
City Council, where are they on?
I wrote it down, but I don't have, I want to say that they'll be on the following, no, they might. I I know what they're doing for the growth plan, I think, but I don't remember what they're doing with the cap. Yeah, I'm not sure. I'm guessing they'll either be on the same meeting because we have a morning and then, you know, there's in the evening or they'll have it their next meeting.
They've been given the identical cap to what the county commission's been given.
Correct.
So the expectation at least.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. They'll probably adopt it after. But yeah. The cap. Oh, is that? Sorry.
Put some shot of that discussion. I guess my concern is we are on track for the goal of a single cap city.
Yes.
Could happen as early as July. Or not, maybe. Okay. And then the next thing was learning growth area plan update. What'd you get there?
Yeah, well, so we're, it's it's basically a meeting behind. We just, or the Port County Commissioners. It's been published. It'll be on the eighteenth, July eighteenth meeting for six o'clock republic hearing and potential approval. Now, we do know, what is the day? August first is when it'll be on city council. August first is when it'll be on city council's meeting.
Again, it's the same.
Correct, yeah.
Ingressions staff on those two?
Which is an amazing feat, I would say. Both of those plans are exactly the same. And we're going through two different government bodies, so.
We did have three meetings, joint meetings. I think some direction came out of that. So, yeah. Good on everybody. Oh, next regular meeting is, we're at this group, July twelve, five P M here. Chairman, I'll be absent. Ms. Hanning, will you be here?
Yes, I will be present.
Okay, so we'll have a forum. Of what, any thoughts? Is there some weak decision that we would want to postpone? Do we have full force? What we have on the chair?
We may have an application, an ex application. Maybe.
Well, let's hold that. Would a week make any difference in there?
A week earlier, I could be there. Meeting earlier, we can do.
July sixth, I live July sixth.
I was thinking a week later. Okay, all right, just so we kind of know what, what they're. Right, what will be of that is. Here's your comments. Anybody got some burning issue that keep us around for? You're all commented on. And do we have any citizens? It looks like it's up to Ms. Hanning to represent the great public here on our screen. And hearing, you know, if there are any objections to adjournment, speak now for world's your peace. Hearing them, we are adjourned. Thank you for your patience. Wasn't sure for all I was going to go, but it wandered here and there. I think it's a good purpose.
Hi, guys. The new group looks fabulous.
It's even better than it looks.
Well, see what.
Down him just well, this is the only way. We don't know where the controls are.
Uh-oh, change order.